Summum.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has given adequate notice of this meeting by having published the date, time, and place of this meeting in the Home News Tribune and has posted notice of this meeting at the middle school, 330 Wayne Street, Highland Park, New Jersey. Can we all rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Linda, may we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Versa? Ms. Berkowitz?
Here.
Ms. Bull?
Here.
Ms. Simorusti?
Here.
Ms. Gowen?
Here.
Ms. McFadden-Dina Cola?
Here.
Mr. Roselwitz?
Here.
Ms. Sherber?
Here.
Mr. Sherman?
Here.
Can I have a motion to appoint Mr. Soto to the representative of the Assembly of Middlesex County Regional Educational Service Commission?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Linda, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Gowen?
Yes.
Mr. Roselwitz?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes. Linda, are there any further communications besides the one posted on the agenda?
Two pieces of communication. One is, I would like to share an email that was congratulating Mr. Mark Levens, who is a phys ed and health teacher and the head varsity girls volleyball coach and the head varsity baseball coach, thanking him for, from on behalf of the Buddy Ball of Edison, thanking him for the participation of the baseball team in an event with the Buddy Ball group on April 12th. They appreciated, just letter of appreciation. Also, I wanted to announce that the registration has opened for the New Jersey School Board's annual workshop in Atlantic City on October 27th through 29th. If anyone is interested in registering for that or in learning more about it, please contact my office. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I'd like a motion to approve the minutes of April 20th, regular and executive session.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? Linda, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Gowen?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dina Cola?
Yes.
Mr. Roselwitz?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Soto, can we have the superintendent's report, please?
Yes, let's begin with the student report.
Okay, so last Thursday, April 30th, Highland Park High School hosted Dead Center Coffee House, and it was a night of poetry, musical performance, spoken word, and visual art, all by students. There was a great attendance, including a lot of HPHS alumni, and Dead Center books are still on sale for $5, so you should buy one. The high school band performed at JP Stevens, at the JP Stevens Band Festival on April 29th, and received an excellent rating, so congratulations to them. Residents and students in Highland Park ran in the Highland Park 5K on Sunday and enjoyed the HP Street Fair. A mandala kicked off the race with the National Anthem. We have some current New Jersey Science League standings for bio, they're in fourth, chem they're in 13th, and physics they're in 18th. Senior graduation will take place on June 23rd at 6:00 PM, followed by project graduation that night. The high school band concert will take place on May 7th at 7:00 PM in the auditorium. The high school choir and master choral will attend ACDA Music Festival at Rutgers Mason Gross on May 21st. Highland Park will sing with other attending schools and receive non-competitive rankings, like the band did. Highland Park Concert Choir will perform Star Spangled Banner at the Somerset Patriots baseball game on May 12th, so everybody should go watch that. And Highland Park was recognized as one of the top DECA programs in the state of New Jersey. Zoe Hudgens was the recipient of the Presidential DECA Scholarship awarded by Johnson &amp; Wales University. Other students participated in the Thrive Academy, as well as competed in the Learn and Earn Project. In their own downtime, they went to Universal Studios and Miniature Golf, as well as different eateries. DECA, as well as the physics classes, will take a trip to Six Flags on May 27th to ride roller coasters and study physics, if they're in physics class.
Okay, so on May 15th, the junior prom will be in the high school cafeteria. On May 28th, 29th, the seniors will go on their senior trip. It consists of a yacht around New York and also a trip to Dorney, is it Dorney Park? Dorney Park, yeah. And June 4th is our senior prom, and it'll be at The Place on the Lake in East Brunswick, NJ. Also, 1X is going to be June 12th, more information to come on that. Some sports updates, we have the boys tennis team ranked fifth at the Greater Middlesex Conference. Also, some exciting news. Last Thursday, the boys tennis team beat Matouchin 5-0, and last Friday, the team beat Wardla Harchards 3-2. We previously lost to Wardla Harchards this season, so it's nice that we were able to have a rematch and beat them at their home turf. Also, the team has, we've held a string of wins recently. And so, further on, the girls softball team won their game today 25 to 3. It's a very big, it's a very big lead, very big win. It's okay, they won. Okay, so, at the middle school, they also hosted their talent show. They had lots of musical acts, and it was on April 30th in the high school auditorium. Just so you know, this was the second annual show, and the music department will sing and perform, as before, at Hershey Park on May 15th. They will, after performing at a nearby school, they'll enjoy rides and food at Hershey Park. Also, the middle school choir and band concert will be on May 19th. Thank you.
Thank you. Since the beginning of the school year, myself and the entire team, we've been working extensively with all of the instructional leaders in this district, the teachers, staff, parents, and some students, to get a better sense of where we're at today and a better sense of where we're supposed to be for tomorrow. We want to leave Highland Park at a better place, instructionally. We want to leave all of the schools in a better place for all of our teachers, all of our staff, and particularly our students. Therefore, there, today, you're going to see two initiatives that were initiated back in September. There were various concerns expressed by the community, about our website, the need to improve our communication from within to the broader community. The second area that we looked into was the special education initiatives, and today you will have that opportunity. I want you to have an open mind, and before we begin to comment about not to pursue a different avenue for our special need kids, give the process the opportunity to just be rolled out and just listen very carefully to the presentation. We're very excited about this new initiative. So having said that, I would like to share with you just a brief report, the District Violence and Vandalism Report. Chris? All right, so while Chris is getting that done, there were three particular areas that we focused on in the website. We wanted a website that was easily to navigate, a website that was interactive, and just more professional, and I think we have accomplished all three goals. Right, that's it? Okay, fine. So, last year, we reported that there was a total of five acts of violence for all of the schools. There were two vandalisms, one case of weapons, and zero substance abuse. This was last year. This year, we had six, which was one over. We have, we had a reduction of vandalism, we had just one, zero weapons, so there was significant improvement there. In terms of substance abuse, there was one particular case. This year, we only had one HIB, as opposed to last year, we had three. So, so you can get a better sense of where we're at and where we're going. And so, let's begin the presentations. Chris, I'll be ready to present the website. So, we're very proud to present to you our new website. I want to just let you know that this has been almost an eight-month labor of love. It's been just a tiring process, and we certainly hope that you will be impressed by our new website.
First thing I want to do, I want to thank the Board of Education for their support. Without your support, we would never finish this project, never started the project, and we're very proud to show you the new websites for the schools and the district tonight. Second, I'd like to thank Mr. Israel Soto for his support, his guidance, his leadership in creating the vision for the communications and giving us the tools and resources to do this. So the first thing I want to show you is what our previous site that we were using looked like. As you can see, it's basically a generic, since Highland Park School District, has a couple dropdowns, has a picture of the drama department, drama club, has some quick links over there, and we have some quick links to the schools there. And at the time when we did that, it's what we needed. It got us better from where we were. So now, we're likely to unveil where we're at now, and we are super proud of where we're going. So, just take a few seconds here to look at it and see what pops out in your eye. We have four circle links to each school with rotating pictures. All these pictures are taken from each individual school. So the pictures you see in there is either work art, some class pictures, pictures of the walls and stuff like that. As you'll see in the background image, the black and white version of the high school. It just sits in there perfectly as a background, it just, just the way it lays, it lays perfectly in there. And as we scroll down, we're going to start seeing the new sections that we added to the site, and the first thing that we did, we added a what's happening section. People are always asking, what's going on in the district? So what we did, just since this is the district page, it's the what's happening page for the district. You can see school recognitions in there, you can see staff recognitions in there, you can see honor awards. As you see, congratulations to Darcy and Kim on their awards a couple weeks ago. So, if you click on, for instance, if you click on the newsletter and you click Read More, or Read More, you can see the current version of the newsletter, and we also have previous versions there. If you scroll back real quick, and it's the end of the year, so everybody wants to know about graduation. So we put graduation there. If you click Read More on the graduation, real quick, we put the days and times of the graduation. So, this is where we're going to keep the public, we're going to change this every couple weeks with the latest news items and keep, keep the news fresh. Remember, this is the district one, so you're going to see information from all over the place. Each individual school has the same section, which pertains just to them. On the right-hand side, you'll see our upcoming events in detail format. This is an event calendar that reads the four event calendars from each district, from each school, and it's all brought up to the main district. So if you want to see what's going on in all the schools in one place, you click here. And like I said, if you highlight over it, it'll tell you what's going on, where it's at, and if you click More Events, it brings you into your normal calendar grid, and it's, some people like to look at it this way, it's a printable version and stuff like that. You can switch through to months, so you can see what's going on. Yeah, click, click the arrow. Here, click this arrow right there. It'll take you into June, it'll show you all the information, and if you highlight the cursor over it, it'll tell you about the event, where it's at, times, locations, and stuff like that. So if we go back to the homepage, and we scroll down the middle a little more, on the right-hand side, you'll see shortcuts. As far as it pertains to the district, we thought these were the most important shortcuts to add at this page. You have your board meeting presentation, so any presentation that's given at the Board of Ed meetings, they will be put here, and you can go back and you can look at them and stuff like that. We have a community information, where we put up documents and resources that the community asked what we're commonly use. I'll go back to the homepage, then you scroll down. You have the Power School Portal, so parents can log into Power School, direct link there. We have the school calendar for the current year, next year. Student registration, big right now. We're in the midst of registration, registration for pre-K and K, so if you click on there, there's all the full, there's all the files you need. Print them out, pre-fill them out, take them, and registration process goes a lot quicker, anywhere from 20 minutes to five minutes, and you should be able to get it done. All right, go home. On the left-hand side of the shortcuts, we now have a section called Highland Park Videos. What we're doing here is we're going to showcase videos that are going on in the school, either made by the classes, made by teachers, or something that we would like to show. This is also a location that we will be presenting the last board meetings at, so you don't have to go on YouTube searching for the board meetings, we're going to put them right here to the site. Basically, what we're trying to do, create an all-in-one shot, because when you go into YouTube and you create Board of Education videos, you get us, you get Illinois, you get California, we're going to bring it here to you. We're doing all the dirty work, we're going to either, we're going to externally link the latest meeting, we'll actually be able to playable through the site, and then if you click on top, under Board of Ed dropdown, we're creating quick links up there, so you can get past videos, and it'll take you right to YouTube and show the video for you there. I'll scroll down a little more. On the right-hand side, our new feature, Facebook. Not everybody has a Facebook account, not everybody logs into Facebook. We're bringing Facebook to you. So everything we post in our Highland Park Public Schools Facebook page, you can see directly right from there. Once again, we want to make it easy, we want to make it an all-in-stop for everybody, you should be able to do anything possible from this site. And it's live, so as soon as something gets posted, boom, it's right there. We see your comments, we see your likes, we see your not-so-friendly comments, but this is, this is it. This is, this is our social media. We're putting all of it together in one spot, so you don't have to have 10 windows open to find out what's going on in the schools. We're going to bring it to you. And then on the bottom, we have our superintendent message, and there's Mr. Soto's message for the month of May and for the launching of the website. The newsletter will be coming out within the next day or two, and this will be in there, so please log on to the webpage, or please read the newsletter as it comes out. Scroll through, I'm going to go through a couple of dropdowns. I just want to show you a couple of the features in the dropdown. So for instance, if you highlight over District, we have our staff directory. So if you click on Staff Directory, the old ways, we had it like an Excel spreadsheet-type format. We're moving away from that. We're moving into an individual for each school, and we're going to try and department on this also. We're going to show you a picture, as long as we can get everybody out of the closet to take the picture, and we'll have a picture, and we're going to have all the contact. You're going to have the email address, we'll be adding the, we'll be adding the phone extensions, everything like that. The way it does look for the other schools right now, so if we click on one of the other schools real quick, so for instance, click on, click on Business Office, or Irving, click on Irving, we still, it's still in this grid format. So you see where we're going, and we plan on rolling this out in early September, because we're in the end of the year, we're going to have changes in staff and stuff, moving around, and stuff like that. We want to be accurate, so being accurate, we figure certain things we're going to roll around come end of August, early September. All right, so if you go back, one of the other dropdown menu features I want to show, go over to District again. We have information about budgets, so if you click on the budget, there's your user-friendly budgets for last year and the current school year. We know everybody wants to see those, they were asked for it. There it is, right there for you. So if you click on the Board of Ed tab, and if you click over it, you'll see we have Board of Ed Info, we have Board Policies, so go over Board Policies. We broke down the policies by section, you click on the section, just click on, click on, click on 500 for pupils. If you want to find a policy on pupils, basically on tenants or whatever, it's right there. It's in a document container, you can download it and everything like that, and you can review it. You can open it right there. Go back over to Board of Ed dropdown. What we did with the agendas, since we're, since we're rolling it out, I created two, two areas of board agendas. So if you click on Board Agendas, I did it from where we're predicting the launch of the website, April and May, and then there's another dropdown for everything from March back. So we gave you all the historical information, and we're giving you all the new information. One of the new features that we've been doing with the board agendas, I don't know if anybody noticed, instead of posting all 50 documents as individual documents, we've been merging everything as one, so you have the agenda as one thing, because I, we notice a lot of people are scrolling through it and stuff like that, and this way you can pick and choose if you just want to print out certain sections of it. Because when you're searching through 50 documents, you're going to have 500 pages worth of it. Here, as you can see, two agendas, one page, two line items. If you were to print that out, or if you were to post it, you're probably about six, seven, eight pages already of documents there, where now you're only down to one page, two lines so far. So simplicity, but we want to give you the information, and on a Tommy manner. Yes, it's an easy navigation, we're making it easier for everybody. One of the new highlights here, under Board of Ed, we already showed the videos, so if you go over Video, and you just click on Video real quick, it'll take you right out to YouTube. There's your video, you can start playing. Oh, all right, close it. I did not set the volume up for that, that's...
I don't like to watch myself, or hear myself.
We've heard that so many times already, we'll shut that one off. Something else that we added, Board News. The board likes to get out information. So this is going to be an area we're going to get out, Board News. To start it out, we have our recognition, Darcy, congratulations again, as our Board News, but this is a page that as information comes out, and it's coming from the Board of Education, this is where we're going to put it. So, please look there more frequently, and you'll see updated items. Documents. We broke the documents down into five sections, by school and by district, all documents, it's kind of like the district. You can search through all the documents, if you click just on one in the school, so click on Irving School, click on Barlow School. As you see on the left side of navigation, you have all those links, but these are just the documents that pertain to Barlow. So if you know you're looking for a document that's in Barlow, just go to the Barlow Document Page, and you're going to find everything there. In the old website, the way we did it, as a lot of people know, on the bottom of the page, we had something called Important Documents, this is it, in a much cleaner format, and we'll be adding and cleaning it up as we go through. All right, go up one more time. Go to home. The one, the last thing we want to share with you on the district page before we go off to the, to the individual school pages, we put a video together, because we're super excited about launching a website, and we hope you guys are just as excited as we are. So we put a video together, it's two and a half minutes, but we want to play it. What the video showcases is our pictures, comments from our principals of how excited they are, and what we can do. So, we're going to play that for you, and then I'm going to come back.
I think it's an excellent opportunity for us to be able to communicate what the things, the great things that are happening here at Barlow. Barlow is a great place, we have newsletters, but this is an excellent opportunity for us to really communicate to the parents authentically what's going on in the schools, they can get real-time information, and it's just an overall great thing. It takes us into that 21st century, much like we all know, and our parents really love that communication, so we're really, really excited, and we look forward to you guys enjoying all the great things that you're going to see on the website. So, enjoy and hope to see you then.
We are so excited over the launch of our new website. This will provide the parents and the community with information, keeping you informed. Please check the website frequently for information on important dates, school communication, newsletters, and student achievement. Thank you.
We're really excited about the new website. It's a great opportunity for us to share all the wonderful things that we're doing here in Irving, and all the great things that happen in Highland Park and the students.
Been in the district a long time, and I've seen our school and district website go through a lot of changes. Super excited that we're finally going to be able to showcase student work, showcase what the teachers have to say, have teachers be able to work together on the internet, and really move into the 21st century with this website.
Okay, that's the video we put together. Principals are super excited about this, positive feedback, the students have seen it, we've had positive feedback, the staff, the public have seen it, so just remember, this is the foundation. We're just going to take all from here, because as we go along this presentation, I'm going to tell you some features that we're going to be adding, and we're super excited, we cannot wait to add these. So, what you've got to do to get to Irving School, you can either go by the school dropdown, or just click on the Irving Circle, and we go to Irving. So here's our new Irving page. As you see, we have the standard dropdowns on top, but two features here, if you go over to Documents, you get just Irving School documents, and you get all the documents in case you want to search a document that's in another school or on the district level. You look at the Irving Quick Links. These are Quick Links that pertain just to Irving School. Each school has that dropdown. So if you want something from the middle school, you go down there, if you go want something from the high school, you go under those links. As we scroll down, as you'll see, every site also has rotating pictures from pictures around the school. Every picture's from the school. We didn't just go and pick something out of the ball on land of the world wide web. These are actually taken from each school. And you'll see their events calendar, they highlight what date it is, and there'll be Event in the lime green, but if you click, go to Events Calendar, or you could click on that, it tells you the event, if you click on the event, if you go to the Events Calendar, you'll get the big grid, or you have in a detailed version on the left-hand side. Quick Links, as you'll see Quick Links in the middle, we have School Supplies, Registration, Honeywell. What we did with the Quick Links, we built links that we thought were sufficient for that school. Not all the schools use the same link. For instance, Irving does not use Power School yet, because they don't have online report cards. We are going to start doing that, I don't know if it's going to be at the end of this year, early next year, so if our parents will get that Power School link, then they will be able to access Power School, get into Irving Report Cards. What we tried to do, we tried to show what was the important things, that if somebody went there, what did they need from that school? We have the school supply list, if you click on the school supply list, somebody new or beginning of the year, they'll have a document container with all of that. Here's our recent news section, and as you'll see, there's a couple items in there with upcoming events. We have the Scholastic Book Affair, we have the Mother's Day Event. If you click the word More, it's a more descriptive item, so click, click More next to the Scholastic Book Affair, right there. So we have the Mother's Day's Plan Sale, it tells you when it is, Monday, Friday, the 78th, and there'll be more detailed information based upon the type of event it is. Go back there one more time, so I make sure there's nothing at the bottom. And every school has just the weather app on the left-hand side, just in case you want to know if it's going to rain, snow, and it's up to date, I checked, I checked with Yahoo, so Google and Yahoo have the same weather. Yep. Okay, then you go to Barlow School, you have the same rotating pictures, you have your dropdowns, your Quick Links, so you scroll down, you have like kid personnel, so you click on there. And also one feature, every school has the lunch menu link and the may pay plus links in every time, so you can go directly and pay for your lunch meals. And same thing, calendar, recent news, the information from the principal, welcome message. All right, go to Middle School. And you'll see their Quick Links, scroll down real quick, it's different. Go to Middle School. Middle School, same, calendar on the right-hand side, Quick Links for them, upcoming events, principal's message, just scroll down to the Quick Links, I just want to show their Quick Links. And just, in the recent news items, it looks like just pictures, if you scroll over to Picture, it gives you a clickable feature to click into it. As you see their Quick Links, since you've got the older kids here, they now have athletics, so we put the athletic Quick Link there. so we put the Athletic Quick Link there, and we have their student Google Login Links there also, for them to log into. And we have Honeywell also. Alright, let's go to High School. And on High School, you got Yearbook Sale, you got rotating pictures, and they got a few more Quick Links on the bottom. One thing I wanna show now, you got the Promises, the National Honor Society and stuff, we also put in something called SLMS, which is a social learning management system. What it is, is it's their virtual classroom. We're right now working on a prototype version, where we have chat rooms set up for the teachers and the students. The teachers could put in assignments, upload assignments, students download them, fill it out, upload it, and the teacher could collect it, so if we needed to, teachers can start going paperless and do assignments that way. I'm just gonna show you that real quick. And like I said, we're still in the prototype, we're building this, so here's what it looks like. The teacher could create a chat real quick, and he can start a chat board with the students, he could post assignments, he could view the submissions of the assignments, scroll down. Students, every student will be able to respond back to the chat. The great feature about this, we set it up so every chat that the student sends has to be approved by the teacher before it's posted. So they review it, and they're responsible for what gets posted for it. Two additional features that we have coming to here, we're creating a file folder, which allows them to put homework assignments, news articles, whatever kind of file they would like to put up there. And then we're creating a video section for video, either taping videos in class, showing videos or whatever. It's gonna be an all-in-one kind of virtual classroom, and they can do links to their external PDF textbooks and stuff like that. The big thing about this, and the big news about this for us is, come September, we are going to integrate it with Power School. So they're gonna have the link, they're gonna have all the student information come right in here, and it's gonna be all here, they don't have to set it up, all their routers and everything will be there, so it'll be in full integration with Power School. So, yeah, log out. And then just two other features that we're doing, our app, we do have an app that's gonna be coming out with the website, that will be out in probably July, August timeframe. We're waiting for approval from both Google and Apple. It takes six to eight weeks for an app to get approved from them. The big feature of the app is when you subscribe to the app, you'll be able to get push notifications on anything we wanna tell you about. So if there's a weather closing, you'll get it directly to wherever you subscribe from, whether it be your iPad, your phone, however you did it, and any events that we wanted, like the Drama Club and stuff like that. And we're just gonna continue maintaining and enhancing the website, and like I said, we're in the foundations here, and we're just gonna grow from here, and we're super excited about it. Once again, I just wanna thank the Board of Ed for your support and allowing us to fulfill this project. Thank you, Mr. Soto, and I could not have done this without the team. Together, we worked as a team, it was myself, Saskia, Kyle Harper, and Jen Layley, and I just wanna thank them all publicly, and thank you.
Thank you so much, Chris. Thank you, thank you. Great job, Chris, and you know, once again, congratulations, Chris, I know you've worked very hard. Saskia, she's, you know, sort of the brainchild behind a lot of the things that you saw today. So as you can see, this particular website is very comprehensive, is visually appealing, right? And once stopped shopping, and it really highlights the very best of Highland Park. If I was a parent, and I wanna move, I'm gonna be looking at your website, and if that website is appealing to me, and is giving me the information that I need, and it excites me, I'm gonna say, I wanna live in Highland Park, and I want my kids to go to those schools, because based on what I'm seeing, I'm excited. And the next step is to articulate the kids and register them into our schools, alright? So, so thank you so much. On another note, all of the work that went, you know, in producing this website also gave us more of an opportunity to have, to be engaged in a deeper conversation about the need for some type of communication department, or some type of communication structure. And so when we looked at, we started talking about what the structure's gonna look like, but we needed a vision, and the vision is very simple. The vision was to, is to improve the communication structures from within. Within is us, our schools, to the greater community, in a way that's accurate, that's consistent, that is timely, and that it's relevant. And based on that vision, we're gonna have some deeper conversations with the board and with the team to see what that communication structure, that communication department, is going to look like. The second presentation is evolved around special education. Now, we believe that good education's for everyone, and one of the things that we've been looking at very diligently is, what can we do a little different, but better for all of our kids? And in this particular case, particularly kids, special needs children, where we have programs currently trying to match kids, when we should have kids matching the programs. And it's my pleasure to present to you today, introduce Bill Shalala, who will be giving you a synopsis of what this new vision, this new restructuring of special education is going to look like. And by the way, no decisions have been made, this is just a presentation, we're gonna continue with that, with that conversation and looking at this initiative a little bit more closely. Thank you. Bill?
Good evening. I'd be remiss if I don't begin by pointing out to the board, the members of our department who are sitting back there, all of whom had various roles in putting this together over the course of this year. You know, when I was here in, I think it was August, and it was primarily about ELL, I made the comment, which one or two of you may remember, that a director of Special Education always wonders when he comes to a board meeting, whether it's being invited to dinner, or it's going to be dinner. At the end of the night, you can tell me which that is, this evening. When I came to you at that time, I was asked a question about the way we had grouped our ELL children, by placing them all into a specific classroom at a grade level. I remember there were some people later who were concerned that we may have even lost a teacher while we're having done that. And I was asked about that, and I said, no, you don't do that, that doesn't serve children, that serves a program. And I went on to say, the exact same principle applies to special education. You don't group children in a classroom, because when you do that, no matter what anyone tells you, it is discriminatory, it segregates the children, it engages in needless public labeling. We are committed to our special education children, our ELL children, our basic skills children, our speech and language children, being integrated across the grades, across the classes, is the only way to do it. So, that's how this began. This began by saying, how do we take a look at this kind of stuff? One of the problems you run into is an interim, is that your time is short, and a lot of interims believe their place to be a placeholder, and I have a problem with that. And I did a little looking at it. And over the last 19 years, the number of directors, full-time and interim in this district, have averaged out to a life expectancy, horrible phrase, but let me use it, life expectancy of one year, four months. You don't have time to wait, if you're going to look at what you're doing and evaluate it in a serious kind of a way. If I'm here next year, in October, I will extend the life expectancy, because I've gone over the 1.4. Okay, so, we have a blank screen. The process, what was the process we engaged in from since September? Special Ed teachers. We met with all the special ed teachers in each building. What amazed me, what amazed me, astounded me, were the special ed teachers who sat there and said, no one's talked to us in years. No one's asked our opinion in years. I couldn't understand that. We went to CPAC. Child Study Team was intimately involved in this process. Now, this should be later, but when we had the plan ready, what we were looking to do next year, the team and I at each building sat down with the building principal, reviewed the plan in its entirety, in its entirety, and every principal signed off. When I had recommendations to make, based on the discussions with various people, those recommendations went out in writing to every special ed teacher, staff member, special ed in the district. I asked for feedback. When I got that feedback, 27 responses, which isn't that bad. I collated them, and I sent them back out to staff. And then, I sent a copy of those recommendations and the feedback to the officers of CPAC. I don't know what anyone else may think, but I think that's, if we're looking for models, a model of how one researches a program. You engage everybody who's involved in it. You get their opinion, you're not gonna necessarily make everybody happy, but you get everybody's opinion. What did the process tell us? The process told us, we needed a full-day special education preschool. We don't have one. We needed study skills at middle school and high school. I cannot tell you how many of our teachers tell us that when our special education students go to middle school and high school, they do not have the tools. Today, it's referred to as executive functioning. I'm an old guy, so I'm using the old terminology. But our kids don't know how to put a paper together. They don't know how to research. They don't know how to advocate for themselves. And I cannot tell you how many meetings I have been invited to by the Child Study Team at the middle and high school, because of parents who want their kids to get support in study skills, because the kids can't do it, or kids who are in honors programs at the high school, who don't know how to write a paper. We're failing them. And a lot of those kids are very bright, and a lot of those kids can go on to post-secondary education, but without the skill sets. We're failing them. And this is, I wanna be very clear, this is not unique to Highland Park. This is an issue across the state in special education. I had one of the most fantastic special ed teachers in the world work for me in the decade I spent in East Hanover. I hated seeing her come in, because she always wanted something, but she was so good, you had to tolerate it. And one day, we had a conversation, and I said to her, you're overprotecting your kids. She said, I know, we special ed teachers do that. We protect them too much. Our good teachers do the same thing, and so our kids aren't prepared. We need more flexible math program at the high school. Our kids have had problems with specific subjects at the high school for years, and we need some more flexibility in programming that. We need greater flexibility in general at Bartle. We need to break out special education students, as we did with ELL. It's the same principle. If it's good for one, it's good for the other. We need to provide for behaviorally challenged students. Last year, we opened a fantastic program at the high school. I wasn't here, so I don't take any credit for it. CBI, Community-Based Instruction, the board supported. Fantastic program, but instead of hiring a new teacher, we closed down our behaviorally challenged program, and those kids had a horrible year. So we failed one group to serve another group. We need to increase our behaviorist time to support our artistic programs. We need to strengthen our CBI program, the one I just mentioned to you, and we've had conversations with New Jersey ARC. And we'll be coming back to the board, hopefully at the next meeting, looking to approve a contract with them. They, for what comes a minimal charge, will come in, teach our students every other week on the community experiences they are going to have, how they play into their academic lives, their lives outside of school. They will take them with our staff down to various, giving them various experiences, and at a rate of $51 an hour, so instead of the $70,000 we spent this year for outside consultation, we have budgeted $20,000 this year, and this program is only gonna cost six of that. Basic skills. Despite the valiant efforts, and I mean that, of Donna Malouf and Mike Lassiter before her, we continue to have a problem with our scores at the middle school. It remains a program in need of improvement. But our kids don't walk into middle school having great skills that they lose. The problem middle school has is one-third of its population changes over every year. At Bartle, at Irving, the only support kids have is to become classified as special education. We need a basic skills program. So far, I think so good. How are we gonna get there? Ah, there's always a rub someplace. If we were to do this by adding staff to the budget, it would have been about a half a million dollars. So from the get-go, we knew that was inviable. It was a tight budget process, it was, that wasn't viable. So how do we do it? We had to look at the way we dispersed our resources, and could we alter those resources and provide everything we needed? First thing we needed to look at was what we do currently, and most districts do. It's model-centered planning. We have a model. A model basically says, at this grade level, you have programs A, B, C, you can add D and F if you want, but that's what you have. Every child must fit the model. It's a model. I only have three options in the model, or four. Every child must fit into one of the options. Children fit into predetermined slots. That's the way it is, there's no other way. If you do student-centered planning, programs are based on the needs of children, never to fill a model. So what did we do, if it'll move forward, to get there? Child Study Team met with every special ed teacher, every special ed teacher, and they obtained recommendations for the coming year. The CST, Elementary, Secondary, and for fifth to sixth, both sets of teams. We sat at a table, we discussed every single special education student in the district. You don't do that in a model, you can't do that in a model. We discussed every child. We created learning universes, if you will, children grouped together for the kinds of needs they had, and we created programs for the coming year around the needs of children. Now, this isn't a model, this is an approach, which means that next year, someone could be standing in this place and making a whole different set of suggestions. Why? Because the needs of the children change. This is always moved and motivated by what our kids need, not what we need. It is easier for me as a director to have a set program. It's easier for our teachers to say, this is what I teach, year after year after year. It's easier for the team. But nowhere in that equation do the kids fit, so we're changing it up. Some of those 27 comments, and I had more, but people said to me, no, you're gonna bore people, so just take a sampling. So, by the way, this whole thing was put together by the Child Study Teams with me. It wasn't myself, this was a group effort. I read through the document, it looks good and on track for what our special ed students need. You correctly stated, we won't all agree with what you recommend, but I appreciate your respecting and considering our input. I appreciate your email, because you present information teachers have been discussing for years. Thank you for being forthcoming and keeping all of us abreast of the changes. A resource room is much needed. I'll explain that in a second. Resource is more effective than the collaborative model unless the model is done right. I love the idea of study skills at the high school, so many of my students would benefit from this. It'd be a great addition to the day, it'd also be helpful by having to possibly spend less time in class just getting organized and situated. These skills are important, far beyond the classroom. And also offering a full-time preschool program would be very beneficial to Highland Park. Now, these next slides were put together at the respective levels by the Child Study Team, so I'm simply sharing it on their behalf with you. Irving School. If you look on the current school year, you'll see what we offer. If you look in 2015, 16, you'll see what we're looking to offer, and the highlighted or colored ones are things we do not currently offer. And the highlighted or colored ones are things we do not currently offer. So we will have a kindergarten pull-out resource room for LA and math, and a first-grade pull-out resource room for LA and math. And it should be highlighted also, the full-day pre-K. At pre-K, we will, for the first time, provide the entire continuum of services. Half-day, full-day, and the ability to be integrated into a gen ed pre-K program. At Bartle, you'll see again what we offer. You'll see two changes. And by the way, this is second grade. I'll go through all the grades and then make a general comment, if you don't mind. So, we continue with the support for language arts, math, writing. Social studies is incorporated into the language arts component. We will add two self-contained classrooms for children who need that. Third grade is the same, follows the same format. Fourth grade. Fifth grade, you'll see no self-contained, because we don't have any self-contained students. There'll be two self-contained classes. We won't have second through fourth grade in both of them. It'll be broken down. And, I hope it was on here, hold on. Ah, here we go. To answer a major concern of people. Right now, LA math, writing, and science gets three hours and 30 minutes of school day teaching. Three hours and 30 minutes. The change is a reduction to three hours. The 30 minutes, which is science, will be supported by a power professional. Because science is primarily hands-on, the classroom teachers will be able to do it with support from the power professionals. That 30 minutes translates into a lot. What also translates into a lot is that here, you have a special ed teacher going in and working with the teacher. Here, you have a special ed teacher going in and working with the teacher. What's the difference? That collaborative classroom takes up two teachers all day long. That special ed teacher does nothing else. This allows us to maximize use of the special ed teachers. That, in turn, allows us to move some staff around and allows us to do the rest of the stuff. Middle school. We are going to, that's what you have. Here's what you have. Basically, this remains the same, except we add a behavioral program with counseling We have a study skills class we now add. And I forgot something, so I apologize, and it's not on the thing, I'll go back. In the process, what we discerned was our speech and language services were deficient. We were not meeting the needs of all of our kids. This coming year, instead of two part-time and one full-time speech and language therapist, we will have three full-time speech and language therapists. Thus, enabling us to meet the needs of all of our children. Life skills. Ah, life skills program is a program that's been at the middle school. It is a program that provides youngsters with a whole bunch of skill sets, using a post office, using a laundromat, going to the bank. One of our thoughts for this coming year is that we will tie that in with the CBI program at the high school, so we have a segue. The high school. Same kind of thing. We're going to have a resource, we hope to have a resource room pre-algebra class, deals with the math issue we've been having. An expanded CBI program, I already discussed the collaboration with NJARC. I think the board may not want to take questions right away. That's up to the board president. And study skills for ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th grades. Community-based instruction program, the CBI. This year, it had collaboration with Middlesex Regional. Next year, it will be with NJARC. School-based job, community-based trips. You can read all of that, structured learning. As time goes on, these children, these students of ours, will engage in job shadowing and job coaching to prepare them for post-secondary life. This is a fantastic program. The board should be commended by everyone for having created it a year ago. For 2015-16, we're going to have a life skills curriculum in there, increased opportunities for independent living. We were able to get a bedroom set, so the kids can do making a bed, going through that whole process. June Miller, who is the teacher, is one of the people back there, and I cannot, cannot praise her enough. This program doesn't work because of any administrator. Doesn't work because of any child study team member, though they're great supports. It works because of a teacher like her. And that was the end of the slideshow. Our effort here is not to reduce services to children, but to maximize them. To do some of the things you saw there, like study skills, the behavioral class, the LLD classes, would have required us, if we just did it as a straight across, to increase the budget, as I said. And at the very beginning, I knew that was an untenable situation, so we didn't even approach it with the superintendent from that perspective. It became a matter, how can we do this with our resources? And one of the great things about this district, one of the truly great things, is because of the board's support over the years, you have a resource-rich district. And resource, to me, is staff. You have a resource-rich district. And we were able to look at those people and say, "Okay, we can do this. We can create the programs we need. We can provide the supports for our children." I said this once before, I'll say it to my last breath, whether here or someplace else. I will not support what's easy for me. My clients are not the board. My clients are not parents. My clients are not staff. My clients are our children. And I will always choose them over models. Always. This meets the needs of children, and I hope you will see that. And I thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. I certainly hope that Bill's presentation has added a little bit of insight to the new initiatives for next year. We're very excited. We're going to continue this conversation and gear ourselves ready to go for the 2015-2016 school year. Thank you so much.
So thank you, Mr. Soto, for all the presentations tonight. Thank you, Bill. Thank you, the study team. Chris, an amazing presentation yourself, and thank you to Suskiya and your team as well. I would like to open up for board questions on any of the superintendent report.
I have some comments, as I think you could have predicted, about the special education presentation. Thank you, there you are, sir. Thank you so much for the presentation, and thank you so much to our child study team. I'm a special ed parent myself, and I have just such a warm heart, warm place in my heart for all of you. I think there are some wonderful things in the presentation. I was very excited to see that we're thinking of moving to a full-time preschool model. I don't believe we have funding in our current budget for that, but I certainly think it's something that we should aim for, absolutely. We would really be a leader in providing special services and other education. Again, I don't see how we do it this year, but if we have money, that'd be great. I'm very excited to see the basic skills program. That's something that I feel very strongly about. What I understand from speaking with people in the community and people in the district is that the problems with basic skills are not limited to special education children. It's not a situation where people in collaborative classrooms are coming into middle school unable to read. It's not a problem with the collaborative classroom model that's leading to that. That is my understanding, that there are many kids from across an educational spectrum, not simply kids in special ed, but some kids who are general ed students who just aren't learning what they need to learn, for whatever reason. So I really applaud the district for adding those teachers. Of course, it's important that we have additional support for behaviorally challenged students, more time with the behaviorists, Mr., I forgot his name, Craig. That would be fantastic. Study skills, I've long felt that our district needs a comprehensive study skills program, going all the way from K through 12. That's something that I know in Elizabeth they do, they have a very successful program. That said, I do have serious concerns about the problem. I voiced these before in private, and I'll go ahead and talk about them now. First of all, there are a couple of procedural things we need to be aware of. The school has not completed IEP meetings for many students at this point. Sorry, I should say, there are some students for whom IEP meetings have not been completed. So of course, the district is committed to working with individual students, not fitting students to the program, but fitting the program to the students. So this may undergo significant changes once we finish having IEP programs. I assume that's your understanding as well, because the district is, in fact, legally obligated to take into account parent input at IEP meetings. The second procedural thing I would say, with all due respect, is that I applaud your reaching out to teachers, obviously, very important constituency, probably the most important. I applaud all the work you've done. I do think that there's been a part missing in the process, and that is reaching out to parents and CPAC. Now, CPAC, I understand that the administration has met with the two co-coordinators of CPAC, who are two wonderful people, and we very much appreciate that outreach. However, parents in the CPAC community have heard nothing about this. Parents have heard rumors here and there. Certainly, the administration has been very generous with its time when individual parents have called up and asked for meetings, and we very much appreciate that. But there has been no systemic attempt to engage parents in the special needs community to find out what they need for their children, or what they think their children need. While parents are not your clients, certainly, we do know more about our children than probably pretty much anybody else on the face of the earth. So I think that before we go adopting a new model, because this is a new model, we need to step back, we need to talk to parents, we need to maybe not have a CPAC meeting, but have a meeting to which special education parents and guardians and families are invited and find out what they think. So that needs to happen. CPAC was not given feedback from the teachers. CPAC was not given this information, even though perhaps some representatives were. I appreciate that, you know, it's difficult to reach out to all those parents, but it can be done. So I think we need to step back from making any dramatic changes like this until IEP meetings are concluded and until special education parents and families have a chance to weigh in. Moving on to details, I was saddened to see that in kindergarten and first grade, we will no longer have push-in support of any kind. The kindergarten and first graders who need special education support in the classroom, I believe now will only be in pull-out programs. So not only will there not be collaborative classrooms in the model that we're used to here in Highland Park, we won't be having collaborative classrooms at all. Children will be pulled out. Now, I know I speak for not only myself when I say that in kindergarten and first grade, being in an inclusive classroom was critical for my child. My child is someone who has a pervasive developmental disorder, otherwise known as, you know, on the autism spectrum. He was not the only child in that class. There were a lot of them, and they all benefited from it. And they benefited from not being pulled out by a special teacher, missing out on classroom activities, going to the little room, you know, and learning on their own. I fully understand that resource rooms are sometimes necessary for some children, of course. But where we can provide a less restrictive alternative for students, we need to be doing that. And I just, I'm very disturbed to see that in kindergarten and first grade, we are moving away from that model. Now, perhaps that is because we have a very unusual demographic of kindergartners and first graders. Perhaps we have students coming in who really have sort of more targeted learning disabilities. For example, they have trouble with letters. They have auditory or ocular problems. So they really just need targeted help in reading and math. That may be true. However, given the statistics on autism and other pervasive developmental disorders, I doubt it. I just, I don't think, at the very least, I don't think we know yet until we have those IEP meetings. For my child, coming in in kindergarten and first grade and having an inclusive classroom where he was not pointed out any more than his behaviors made him appear pointed out, was just, is absolutely critical to his success in school. I see that we're adding two self-contained classrooms for kindergarten and first grade. That tells me we're taking some of those students that would ordinarily be in a collaborative class and we're moving them into a self-contained classroom. I hope that is because we have a dramatically different demographic of students coming in. If it's the same kinds of students that we've had year after year in my child's grade level, then no, self-contained classrooms. We don't need to be adding self-contained classrooms. We need to be moving toward a more inclusive model, or at least staying with the one that we have. I would also say, moving on, two through five. I want to add a personal comment here. I do have a special needs child. It's always a little awkward for me to talk about this, because I feel like I'm talking about my child. I am satisfied with my child's placement for next year. It's not perfect. You know, it doesn't meet all of my preferences, but it's fine. So I speak here on behalf of other families. Second through fifth grade, I'm glad to see that we are having push-in support. It's not all pull-out and resource rooms. But again, I am hoping that we made this decision because of the peculiar demographics of the second, third, and second, third, fourth, and fifth grade classes that are coming in. My experience with my children's, I have two children in the district, with what I see around me, is not that we have a dramatic diminution in the number of students with developmental disabilities that are global and go throughout the day. Now, I do understand that in theory, we would only be losing in second, third, fourth, and fifth grade, a half an hour of collaborative time. I don't, I'm not sure that I believe, as a scheduling matter, we're really going to be able to have the same special education teacher collaborating in second through fifth grades in this new push-in model. It just seems like it's going to be impossible. You know, obviously, children with developmental disorders benefit from consistency. It's not just that they have a teacher who comes in during ELA, but it's that they have a special education teacher with special training who's there for, you know, an extended period. If it was just a half an hour, sure. My own child's experience in second grade, I know I'm going on, but I really, I feel strongly about this. My own child's experience in second grade was that the collaborative classroom teacher, the special ed teacher, did step out. I'm not sure, I heard that special ed teachers don't do anything else. I know that my child's collaborative classroom teacher in second grade was also a reading resource teacher and would leave the room for a half an hour. So I don't think parents are concerned about a half an hour here and there. I think they're concerned about consistency throughout the day. And that might finally wrap up what I have to say, but I really do hope that we step back until IEP meetings are over, until CPAC and special ed parents generally can have a seat at the table. I also, I was a little disturbed by, there was a comment from a teacher, and I certainly respect the right of every teacher to have their own view on this, obviously. But to the extent that it's a, sort of represented a theme for the presentation, I was concerned when I read that, according to one teacher, let's see here, yeah, probably I can't find it now. Give me a second. "A resource room is much needed. Resource is more effective than the collaborative model unless the collaborative model is done right." I'm asking the board to go back and do the collaborative model right. We know it has problems, but let's do it right this time. Let's not say that resource rooms are a better model in general. That's my request to the board, that we step back from this. Thank you.
Any other board comments?
I just really quickly wanted to say that I have experience with the collaborative model that we currently have as a general education parent. And I think that having the children minimize the impact of stigmatization as far as pulling them out for special education really did have a positive impact on my son, who was consistently in a collaborative classroom, for whatever reason, as a general ed student for three years at Bartle. So I can't speak to the high school model, and I can't speak to the middle school model changes. But as far as our experience goes in Bartle and in Irving, I think it really did help to de-stigmatize the fact that the children in my son's classroom that had special needs were a part of every single activity. They were not pulled out for any reason. So I feel very strongly that we try as hard as we can to make the stigmatization that is, you know, unfortunately, a part of having special needs or being different in any way, to try to minimize the impact of that. And I think that the current model does a fairly good job of that. I couldn't imagine that it could be better pulling the children out for special needs resource room activities, so that's my concern.
I would like to add one thing to that, and with all due respect to Mr. Shalala, I don't think that you can make any comparison between this model and what happened this year with ELL. With grouping those ELL students, they were thrown into general ed classrooms with no English as a second language teacher, no support for those teachers whatsoever, and you would have a situation where five children spoke the same language and then would sit in a corner by themselves and all speak to each other. I don't think there's going to be five autistic kids in a room, all just with each other. They've got all the other students, it helps draw them out. I think it's actually quite the opposite situation to what we saw this year, and that had to be undone. It absolutely had to be undone. We've been doing collaborative classrooms in this district as long as I've been in this district, and I've been in this district for a long time, and I have exactly the same experience as Michelle, from the general ed side of things. One of my children is in the general ed, or in the collaborative classroom this year as a general ed class. I don't think she could point out which students in her classroom are or aren't special ed. They're just her classmates, and she knows she's got another teacher in there. It's not the same as English language learners, where the kids clearly speak no English, they are absolutely, you know, influenced by all being grouped together in a classroom. I see them as two completely separate issues, and I think we have to look long and hard at what, you know, what we've done in this district, and if there are things that need to be tweaked, to tweak them, but not to throw the baby out with the bathwater.
I have to offer a different perspective. As my children...
As my children went through, they were not in collaborative classrooms, but they were in classrooms where children were pulled out for any number of things. It became part of the day, and it was just, one, this is a small school, and all the children know each other, and they know if kids have issues, or which issues they have, or, you know, whether it's, they're not, you know, classified special ed, but they, you know, might be quirky. There are just, there's a whole wide range of kids, and they come to accept each other, and it's part of their experience every single day. The other thing I have to say is, again, it's not my experience, but that I've heard of general ed kids in a collaborative classroom, if they're in, well, at least one, was in for three years in Bartle, went to the middle school, and is actually academically held back by that experience, because in any classroom such as that, the special ed kids require more attention, and the general ed kids don't, maybe don't get it. And I understand that you're saying that it hasn't been done right.
Correct.
I don't, I can't, I can't speak to that. I'm just offering more information, that if, you know, do not reject this model, it may, it may offer some other positives.
I would imagine that for a general ed kids, in terms of academic achievement, it might well be better. Unless it's done very carefully, there is of course a risk that the special education children will eat up more attention, you know, if it's not done properly. I've been lucky enough to have a child in a collaborative, in five collaborative classrooms, where it's not been my impression, and speaking with general ed parents, they, you know, they've had, they have agreed with this. That's not to, you know, deny anybody's experience, I am 100% sure that that does happen at times. I, it's, I mean, it's, there's no model that's perfect, but I think the choice between improving this model, and making sure that gen ed students are getting the help they need from the two teachers, I think that's a better weighing of costs and benefits, than taking some of those special needs kids and putting them in a resource room. That probably does, I know you didn't mean it like this, I am not trying to put a bad spin on your words. I mean, that does free up time for the general ed kids to learn at a faster pace, but it's, I don't think it's an exchange we want to make. I would also say that a lot of, I mean, again, I know, I hear what you're saying, and that was, that was an experience, and that, that can't happen, that needs to be improved on. Many of the special needs kids in these classrooms are not, they don't have cognitive disabilities so much as, you know, other disabilities, so there's, the hope is that if it's done right, students would not be held back academically, students would still be reading the same books, taking the same park exam, you know, et cetera. But I understand it doesn't always work out.
Let me, I like to add something to this conversation. Also, on a personal note, I was classified with an IEP in this district from first grade on. I went through a full special education spectrum, from first grade to 12th grade, having experienced different models, and having experienced different needs, for me personally. The resource rooms themselves are what saved me, and what provided me with the attention and the detail that I needed as a, as a student. I still can't write a paper to the best of my abilities without the, the, the support of those who helped me when I was in high school. So we are doing a lot of conversation about fifth grade and below. I'm going to now talk about high school, middle school, and above, because I think that's where there's a lot of change that happens, that is not met in a collaborative classroom, where there are specific identified needs that students need, and that a special education teacher, and a community that's, and a support team that supports that parent and those students, can help identify to fit, to fill the gaps in their learning. For me, and I know for many of my friends, and people that I looked, you know, I was here, anybody knew, anybody knew exactly whatever anybody was in this district. It's 100 kids. You can label it any way you want it, but it's the teachings that the special education teachers give you in their classrooms, about how to identify yourself, and how to, how to be that person is what defines our district, and what I think we, we need. So, the collaborative classroom, I mean, I don't know, I don't think, Rose, did I experience that? I don't think, I did not, and I, and I just, it wasn't something that we did.
It wasn't, it wasn't around when you were in school?
No. And, no, it wasn't, and, you know. And the other thing that I do want to talk about, and I think you hit the nail on the head, is the way that we culturally address our special education students. Our special education students are babied. They are allowed to do much more and beyond what they should be, what they should be allowed to do, to really set their, set the level of their achievement. I don't think that's ever changed since I've been on this board. There's only been one year that I haven't been associated with a school district, from when I graduated to today, and I don't think we've changed that much, in terms of special education, especially at the middle school and the high school level. I think when you look at what special education students are allowed to do, they are allowed to fail courses and still pass. Thank you, they're allowed to create subpar work and still pass. I think that this is something that we culturally need to address, in terms of how do, how do we, how do we grade them, how do we grade, grade special education students appropriately? How do we mentor them appropriately, and what are the proper mechanisms in place? So I think you're on the right track, especially at the high school and middle school level. I can't speak necessarily to the collaborative side, but I think that there's basic skills, the actual addition of behavioral skills, including learning laundromat and all that kind of stuff, are very important for, especially the high school and middle school level, and would have helped me greatly when I was in the, when I was in the district. So thank you.
I should say, I should have prefaced my comments by saying that I can't really speak to the middle school or high school.
Right.
That could well be true. I also don't contest the need for resource rooms.
Yeah.
But I don't want to rule them, I don't want to rule out the less restrictive setting, you know, ex ante, right? Maybe my kid needs a resource room, but maybe my kid is in that, that middle ground, that can be in a less restrictive environment, and, you know.
Yep. I mean, I know we have had models where we've had one or two collaborative classrooms, one, and, you know, where it fit the right students, that that was appropriate, but not, not necessarily for everybody, because as Ms. Bull said, it's not, it's not necessarily the appropriate environment for both the special ed student and for the general ed population.
I would, I would disagree with that. I think, of course, there are going to be some partnerships in which that happens. I've also, you know, my friends and I have experienced teachers, not in this district, of course, speaking of my own experience in school, teachers whose environment was not the best for general education students. In other words, you can have a good teacher, a bad teacher, a good teaching pair, a bad teaching pair, but I am not convinced, in fact, I strongly disagree, that inevitably, a collaborative classroom is going to favor the special, or not favor them, is going to focus too much time on the special ed kids, to the detriment of the general ed kids. In fact, I see it as the opposite. I mean, you put a child with, you know, challenging autistic spectrum disorder behaviors in a general ed classroom with one teacher, those general ed students aren't going to be learning, you know, the way they were in a collaborative classroom. It's going to be a diminution of the attention that's given to them.
I was actually going to support that.
Can I just say something?
Absolutely.
I haven't spoken yet.
Absolutely.
The best thing that I have heard tonight is that we don't have a given model, and so the services that are designed for the kids are based on their needs. So we don't know what all the needs are yet. So that's the most encouraging thing I've heard tonight, is that we base our services on what the kids need, and I'm just going to have the confidence in the special ed staff and administration that the right decisions will be made. And if the wrong decisions are made, then we will need to know about that. So I appreciate all the work, and all the interest of people on the board, and people in the community, that we want for the special ed students. And as we've heard, there's a lot of different kinds of students with special needs, so we should just hope that, not even hope, just have faith, that the right decisions will be made.
Respectfully, I'm not prepared to have faith until parents have a seat at the table on this particular issue. I understand there was, there was an effort made out, which is greatly, greatly appreciated, to reach out to the coordinators of CPAC, that's greatly appreciated. And I know that when parents individually have called, you've been very generous with your time, and, you know, so have all the child study team members. But I, I can't have this faith until the IEP meetings are over, until parents and CPAC have a chance to look at these, these changes. I mean, I'm a CPAC parent and a board member, and this is, you know, I heard about this an hour beforehand. I knew some of the changes were coming, of course, we've discussed them, we've discussed them, but I didn't know that first and, first grade and kindergarten classrooms were moving to a, an all pull-out model. I mean, I'm not sure that we've had enough input from some of the important stakeholders here.
Well, it's, it's clear to me that this is a subject that's very dear to many people's hearts, particularly if you have a child that's a special needs child. I will say this, I've read the presentation, we've had numerous conversations, there are two areas that you alluded to, finishing up the IEP meetings, and doing a better job in reaching out to parents, both of which we're going to pursue.
Great.
We're going to have a deeper conversation with Bill Shalala and the team. This is phase one. I can't guarantee that this is going to change, but we will discuss it a little more. The intent was never to have you vote on this, this is a presentation, this is phase one of this presentation. If we need to tweak it, we will. If the recommendation is, we're going to proceed forward as is, that's exactly what's going to be done. But certainly, I would appreciate more input from the parents, and we're going to pursue that as best we can.
Wonderful, thank you.
Any other comments?
Bill, do you have any?
Absolutely. No problem.
Use the mic.
I need to clarify a couple of things. CPAC is the official parent organization, is this on?
Yes.
CPAC is the official parent organization. We reached out to them, I attended two meetings, I believe Superintendent was at one with me. We sent the recommendations and the feedback to the CPAC officers. We cannot be in a position to then demand what CPAC does. Other than going out, and I'm, I'm sorry, I have to be frank, other than going out to the highways and byways, and asking people, what do you think? We sought parent input.
Yeah.
We sought it appropriately as part of the process. Let me continue. I need to make a couple of things clear. The recommendations at Irving came from Irving. They came from the principal and her staff, with a belief that pull-out resource was more appropriate for the children at that young grade level. We have not eliminated co-teaching, we have altered the model. Altered it, not eliminated. And the last thing you need to know, well, two things you need to know, they've been writing IEPs. Parent support in those IEPs exists for the change. They're going to have to go back and rewrite those IEPs. And why? At the middle school and high school, and I think this has been missed, there's a domino effect. If you insist that collaborative cannot change, and that's your right as a board, and I respect that right, please understand that, nothing else happens. It can't. Other than if you can find me $300,000 to $500,000 to do it. There are no study skills, there's no ED program, there are no basic skills, the money's not there. When we created this, we did it using the resources you currently have, so the board didn't have to confront the question of more money. And the full-day preschool is there for this coming full year, school year. It's not a future proposal. One of the reasons it's there is we had a full-time classroom that wasn't going to have a child next year. So we moved that teacher, or going to, move that teacher down to doing full-day preschool, because we have that autistic population that's going to be there. And that's part of our, and that's one of the reasons why we have the increased behavioral component, because we're going to increase our behavioral supports for the, for the Irving and Bartle autistic programs. But you need to know with all respect, and I do mean with all respect, that this is a whole, this is a garment. Balanced delicately to provide every kid, when you focus only at the Bartle collaboratives, you are ignoring what is going to happen at middle and high school. Those kids need these services. If we don't provide it, we're going to continue to have children who are unprepared. I find that, and, and you know, forgive me, but at some point, we have to trust the professional staff. At some point, you have to trust your administrators have the well-being of children in mind, and that all these people have the well-being of children in mind. No one there, there isn't a person sitting over there who will not confront me if they think I'm doing something that doesn't benefit a child. And I can't tell you how many times they've done it and beaten me up. They represent kids, they will always represent kids. That's, that's who they are. So, you know, I, again, with respect, this is a, if you're going to say, no, we don't want to move ahead, that is your right as a board, as an administrator, I will implement what you want. But no, the whole thing falls apart.
I just want to say one thing, and it is to what Mr. Shalala said about who to reach out for, reach out to. CPAC is the recognized structure that this board does reach out to for special ed concerns. It is, I believe mandated by the state that that committee has put forth, and they have their own internal structure that we don't, we don't, we don't intend with. But to say that we didn't reach out to parents because they didn't do what you may think they should have done, is not, is not genuine to the work that Mr. Shalala did put into this.
I apologize. I, from what I know of the internal workings, the internal meetings that went on, not enough was done early on. I know that, I mean, I don't want to go into this at the board table, Adam, but I know there was a very lengthy meeting, it was last week, and that was involving the officers. That wasn't enough time to get information out to members.
Okay.
Also, yes, I get, yes, of course, CPAC should do more, CPAC should do this, but I also received, you know, parents received a letter from Mr. Shalala, explaining that a survey was coming out, you know, soon. I mean, there is a mechanism to communicate with special ed parents, and the district can use it, and when it's something this important. I also want to say, I am 100% in favor of basic skills teachers.
Yeah.
You know, it's something we need to figure out. And I'm not sure, well, I'll save that for later. I else, I just want to say, since, since it was implied that perhaps I don't think you have the best interest of kids in mind, that's never my, that's never my feeling, of course not. No, I think we have a disagreement, and we have a disagreement, it doesn't mean that we, you know, think bad of the other, I certainly hope not. I have, I'm sure, you guys are professionals, this is what you do all day, I'm sure that this comes from, from your heart, just as it comes from my heart. So I hope that we can sort of put aside any implications of bad faith. Thank you.
Well, I can only say this, I challenged every single staff member in this district, and I had the conversation with Bill, about what can we do to improve the services that currently being rendered to our special need children. This process, this initiative, was not thought about yesterday, last night, and put together in a paphazard way. A lot of thought, a lot of thinking, a lot of professionals were involved in this entire process. We are not going to use our kids as guinea pigs to see if it's going to work. No, this has to work. This has to work. We live and die by our decisions, and certainly, we're not going to put our kids as guinea pigs, well, if it didn't work, we'll try it again. We don't have that luxury. I, you know, I have a fictional character, his name is Miguelito, right? And Miguelito follows me, you know, everywhere I go, and Miguelito can't wait until we figure it out. Miguelito needs the services now, so we need to get our act together, and I can understand the passion, and I respect that. But, you know, right now, we have a plan that's very cohesive, it's doable, if it needs to be tweaked, it will, and we're going to have further conversations about this. Yes?
Great, I'm glad to hear that. I do want to clarify, this is not an issue of passion versus expertise, however, I mean, there are many experts who, you know.
Yeah, absolutely.
Experts clash in this area.
We recognize that, Ted.
One, one question I do have, it seems that a lot of the recommendations have come at the idea that there is no possibility for the expansion of services based on the money that we have available to us, that everything is based on what we've been spending in the past, and expanding services and cutting services, so it's imbalanced. Is there anything that is missing from this recommendation that would require additional funding?
That's a good question. That's a good question.
The simple answer is no. There were, we increased, there are small increases in the budget, for the speech, and last year, we had a hybrid position, related to one student, which was a person who was a part-time social worker and part-time power professional, so there was a slight increase to make that position full-time social worker. They were actually in the budget, but if I recall, and Linda or the superintendent may recall this better, I believe the overall department budget went down. Was it about $70,000 or something?
How they can confirm.
Yeah, the, the overall budget went down. Part of that would be a retirement that we're not replacing, I believe. Part of that was the fact that we had, in two places, we had money for the CBI program that totaled roughly $90,000, but because of our ability to reach out to NJARC, that program is going to, we're getting rid of $70,000 of that 90. In no place did it impact the quality of programming. So, so we reduced, even though we had some minor, and those, those increases in the So we reduced, even though we had some minor, and those increases in the speech therapists were because we found ourselves coming up to a wall, we were not fulfilling our regulatory responsibility. And we wanted to make sure that we did that, that if a child was special for speech, they would get speech. And something's been glossed over, I in conscience couldn't continue to gloss over it. So bottom line is, we actually have a reduction, but for a couple of factors. Thank you. Any other questions?
There was just one thing.
Yep.
I couldn't help myself. I understand and I appreciate all of the work that the professionals, meaning the child study team and Mr. Shalala and all of the staff, put into this presentation, and I do know that you've worked on this for quite a while. But I think that to characterize the position of professionals as just that group, and to make this into a binary argument where parents are pitted against the professionals, I don't like that. And I don't appreciate that. And I think that the parents are the professionals as far as their children go, and I think that to characterize it that way, really, it's picking a fight. And I didn't like to hear that. So I would like for the parents to understand that that is not my attitude, and I would hope that that's not the attitude of Mr. Shalala, but I did need to point that out, that that kind of rubbed me the wrong way. And I do think that the parents are the professionals when it comes to their children, especially their special education children, because they are so vulnerable, and they do need to fight to get their children the IEPs and the 504s and everything else that they deserve. So I just wanted to, I needed to say something about that.
Thank you.
Can I make one comment? One thing that's striking me is that parents of special ed kids are very familiar with their kid, and I don't know how familiar they are with the array of children in the district. So I think it's important for people to recognize their kind of kid is one kid that might need one type of setting. Some other kid might prosper in a resource room. So I just think it's really important that everybody sees that there is a range of special ed needs with a range of solutions, and we will just hope that that range of solutions gets put in place for each kid.
I certainly agree. When I speak, I speak not as a parent to my own child whose placement is fine next year. I recognize fully. I also don't like the idea that when special needs parents talk, they're talking because they're passionate about their own kid, and you know, they're grasping for the best situation for their kid. My kid's fine next year, he's good. This doesn't affect him terribly much. And I, you know.
But your experiences do skew you, as they have skewed me.
So did Mr. Shalala's skew him. I mean, just as, you know, we're, yes, of course, we're all subjective people, we all are biased in certain ways, but I'm doing my best to think of the kids that are, you know, that have ASD, and the kids that have dyslexia, the kids who are blind, you know, and not that we have any, I don't think, but, you know.
You done?
I'm good.
Are you done?
Yep. Anybody else? Anything else, Mr. Soto?
Are you talking to me? What, I'm sorry, what were?
You look like you were like...
No, 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 was something else?
She was yelling, no, she was yelling at me.
Okay.
So is there any other questions? No, okay. Ms. Claire, could we have the curriculum committee report?
The curriculum committee did not meet tonight. Nor did we discuss policies, which I thought we were going to do.
Well, we had a pretty jam-packed morning this morning.
Do I do the agenda stuff?
You don't have, if you, you don't have to go through it particularly, but if you have anything you want to highlight, feel free.
I just want to highlight on the agenda, number one, we talked about this last time, the ESL, ESL language curriculum grades nine through 12 is present tonight, it is on that table. I just put my copy of it back. If you'd like to look at it, please go ahead. I will point out that I really like how the curriculum is written. It's something I do professionally in another school district. I like our format, and I really like the essential questions that we use. There's an essential question on there that says, "How would we define good and evil?" That's a great question. ESL kids should be thinking about that. So I'm really happy that that's in there. So please go take a look if you had questions about it, and it's there.
And I do want to say, I appreciate us putting this off for two weeks so that it was put on the drive, and we all got a chance to look at it. Not that I'm a professional and know exactly what I'm reading, but I do like to, like, at least lay my eyes on it.
Yep. Any other comments?
No, that's all I'll point out on the agenda.
Thank you. Any comments from the board?
I wanted to ask how the curriculum was put together, who put that together for the ELL students?
Yes, the teachers. As a matter of fact, the one who led that initiative is Fanny Alexandra Pliss from the high school. She started writing this at the end of the summer, and this curriculum is currently being implemented at the high school.
So this was under your supervision then?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
It's the model that we used to write all curriculum.
Okay, I just wasn't sure if this was a holdover from last year, so I just wanted to ask about that.
Thank you, special ed teachers.
Thank you.
I did want to ask about, if anybody knows anything about the Every 15 Minutes program for the high school?
Yes, I did that program while I was here. It's about drunk driving. Every 15, it's in coordination with prom.
So is it something we approve every year, this yearly?
Yeah.
Okay. And then I did want to point to number nine, which is the Sources of Strength Project that we talked about, that Amy Savell came and talked to us about two weeks ago. Very glad to see that we're moving forward with it, and I really, I really look forward to seeing that implemented.
And for the Every 15 Minutes program, you will see a totaled car on the front lawn for a day.
That freaked me out, the first time I saw it. Holy moly.
Don't, it's to teach a good lesson.
No, I'm glad to see that that's still happening.
Yes?
Really quickly, one question. The Scarlet Letter was on the ELL curriculum?
Yeah.
I couldn't remember for what grade. Now, I don't see, I think it was for 10th grade.
Isn't it a ninth grade book? Yeah.
I was a little concerned with the content of that for ninth grade, but if that's for 10th grade, that seems a little less of a concern. So I just wanted to make sure where that was. Now, I can't find it. I did, but there's so many pages of it, I can't find it at the moment.
Chromebook's a little slow here, too.
Yeah, not easy to navigate.
All right. We'll look into it.
Can I ask a question just for my own information, super quick? The ELL curriculum, is this curriculum that the ninth through 12th graders will be, the ELL students will be pulled out to study this on their own, or is the whole school reading the Scarlet Letter, and this lays out how the ELL students will be differentiated? I just didn't, that's not a challenge, it's just a question.
I don't know the answer for that.
You know the answer, okay.
We'll look at it.
It seemed like odd, like very difficult choices, if it's just for the ELL students. Like, I'd prefer my first book to be, you know, the newspaper article.
Romeo and Juliet?
Maybe not, yeah.
Shakespeare, well, that's less challenging.
I mean, challenge them, yes, but.
I had to read, what did I read? No, what's the British, what's the British, the Old English dog?
Beowulf?
Yeah, Canterbury Tales.
Oh, wow.
Did you have, couples and ELL students? Did you have to memorize the, what do they call it, the intro, the prologue, preamble? With the shortest suta, the true to the birth is to the...
You guys are scaring me.
Mister, we can thank, thank Mr. Belai for that. Ms. Paul, can we have the, sorry, are there any comments on the, any other comments on curriculum?
So Darcy found it, it's in ninth grade.
Ninth grade. It's a ninth grade book.
It is?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what I read, I read it as ninth grade.
I can't believe you remember that.
I'm only 10 years removed from this school.
Yeah, no, I remember reading it in high school, but, yeah, my experience with a lot of these things is going to be a little old-fashioned since I went to Catholic school.
There you go. Join our fourth grade sex ed class, you'll really have a nice...
Bring it, bring it, it's great. I'm just, you know, I just wanted to get my head on straight about that, but if it's teacher-made and Mr. Soto approved, okay.
Ms. Paul?
The finance committee did not meet tonight. Item 67, relate to a water heater in the high school kitchen, that it was an emergent purchase. Item 8, 62 seats, and the bleachers have to be repaired. Item 1112, these items are budgeted in the 2015-16 school budget, but they have to be, the order has to be placed at this time with payment to be made after July 1st, just for clarification. Item 13, these are the tuition rates that are updated in accordance with the state budget software. So the rates have gone down in most categories due to increased enrollments in general education, and some special ed categories are projecting higher rates, but we cap the increases at 10%. And that's due to small changes in enrollments also. We have in item 14, a donation that we receive each year from the Resnick Foundation to fund the annual Lindsay Meyer Teens Institute, which is a summer teen program. And item 15 is a replacement server to support Power School, the student database system. The current server's six years old, and the newest version of Power School is not able to be run on it. Also, the high school boiler replacement project, the bid opening is scheduled for May 14th. And Linda, do you want to?
No, that was for your...
Okay.
No, I do not.
And that's it.
Are there any comments on the finance committee?
My only comment would be that I find the tech stuff impossible to understand, you know, why it costs $71,000 to buy, you know, this series of switches. I appreciate the breakdown. I wonder if in the future, we might have Mr. Humphrey here to just give us a little bit of context. I just feel kind of completely without...
We tried to get him in here tonight, but he had an obligation that he had to take it up.
Sure, sure, I, of course.
But when we need, so when we know major tech stuff is coming down, we'll...
That'd be great, thank you, thank you very much. Is there a way to hold this off a couple of weeks to be able to have him come and...
The reason that we had to get it on was in order to be, for this to be eligible for the E-rate discount of up to 60%.
So meaning we spend this now, we get 60% of it back?
Yes.
It's like my grants.
Yes. The application had to be in by, I think, March 21st.
That's a darn good reason to do it right there.
Yeah, we had to give a letter of promise, knowing that it was, I think, no, I'm sorry, April 20th or something, but we knew it would be included in the budget, so we went forward with the obligatory letter in order to qualify for the E-rate application.
Okay, great, thank you for that explanation.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Ms. Sherber, can we have the personnel?
Personnel committee did not meet tonight. I would direct your attention to the agenda, which lists the new salaries of most of our tenured and untenured professionals as per the contract that was negotiated with the HPEA. Additionally, there is one correction, item number seven, we are going to have to create an item 7A, so instead of being a 12-month non-tenured administrator, Jen Knapp is actually a 10-month non-tenured administrator, so if you could make that correction. That's all.
Are there any comments? Ms. Sherber, can we have the policy report?
The policy committee did not meet tonight, but I do see that the curriculum committee has been busy sort of mashing through policy, and I'm very grateful and appreciative, and so we have a number of policies on the agenda tonight for first reading.
Claire, would you like to draw the attention to what the changes are? I mean, I know we made some changes...
From last time?
From last, so the ones that we made are on the agenda for this week. So like the way we describe gender is in these policies?
I don't know if Claire still has her copy, but I have mine.
Okay.
From what we changed last time.
From what we changed last time.
Yeah, I just did half, I think we got through half.
Last time, when we met two weeks ago, some of the changes were, anytime it said the Assistant Superintendent, we changed it to the Superintendent or Designee. We were more careful about the language around gender and transgender students, and every time it mentioned the New Jersey Core Curriculum Content Standards, those are the NJCCS, we also added the Common Core State Standards, because those are part of the New Jersey State Standards now as well, for Language Arts and for Math, and for Science and Social Studies in grades six through 12.
I actually had a question about that. Is it necessary to state both, or isn't Common Core State Standards implied now in the New Jersey Core Content Curriculum Standards? So it's not just kind of rolled in?
No, no, not for Social Studies, not for Science, not for PE, not for Art, not for, it's basically just Language Arts and Math, except for Science and Social Studies at the middle school and high school levels.
But isn't, but isn't, Common Core has been adopted as the New Jersey Core Content Curriculum Standards?
No, it hasn't. It hasn't.
Okay.
Sorry.
Michelle, would you like to add anything?
Just, we were, I think we were, I'm proud to say that we were sensitive to the wording around, it was both men and women, or the contribution of, you know, both genders, things like that, that we were thinking, I think, forward-thinking in dealing with sexual orientation and gender identity.
Yep.
So are we going to do comments on these now, or are we holding them until later?
If you have comments.
Yeah, just in 2310, on the second page, item two, it's like there's bullets, one, two. In two, it says, "If the conference is not resolved, the difference of opinion, request a conference with a department supervisor." We don't really have department supervisors, do we?
We took that out.
No, it's not taken out.
Right.
Maybe just didn't get taken out this copy or something?
Yeah, we can just take it out.
Well, there are other strikeouts, so that's strikeout. So, but it seems like, and the student's guidance counselor, so who would they request the conference with? Would that...
What number are you talking about?
It's 2310, 2310 is the policy, and it's on the second page, it's the second item.
Second page, second item. Does not resolve.
Can we say classroom teacher?
Why don't we just take it out, and just have the student's guidance counselor?
So they've already met with the teacher. The first is request a conference with a teacher who made the placement, then it's request a conference with a department supervisor and the student's guidance...
Can we just take out district supervisor?
Just take that out?
Just take out the staff.
So department supervisor is out.
We don't have that.
We don't have that.
All right, and then just the housekeeping one, on 2310, uh-oh, where did it go?
Same policy?
No, 2310 is grouping.
Is that the same?
Oh, sorry. Is that the one, sorry?
I think so.
Wait, maybe it was 2320. Yeah, 2320, in the first, second, third, fourth paragraph, it says, "Applicants shall be limited to pupils," it's the last sentence in that paragraph, "who have completed grade eight programs of independent study, need not be limited to participation by a single pupil, but may involve more," and it says, "by may involve more." Do you see that, Linda?
The next paragraph actually has a little missing article. The first sentence, "The principal or designee shall offer aid and counsel to qualified pupils who wish to explore and initiate an independent project."
I like that you called that an article.
No, at one point, I thought they went through and changed all the pupils to students.
We actually discussed, we had this discussion that you said it at some point in the future, yes, that Ann said it.
So I think that is the case, we changed pupils to students. That's like an antiquated term.
Which one?
Pupils.
Pupils?
So anywhere that pupils shows up, that we're changing it to students.
Actually, we had done that.
Well, we had this conversation in committee, and from your conversation.
Right, and I remembered that for some reason. My brain is strange that way, but I remembered that.
So we can just do a finder in place?
Have a pause. Yeah.
In the whole district? Sure? Yeah.
Just search it.
Or we could just keep it the way it is.
I think as they come is...
Yes.
Yeah, right, new policy.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll call Susan later.
So, there are actually a couple of places. I didn't realize we were getting all into the piggy details, but...
We don't have to do piggy, to be honest, we don't have to do piggy details at the table, but you're more than welcome to.
No, no, this was just, this was a more, not a piggy detail. It was a more broad detail. On policy 2330 for homework.
Yep.
We had talked about adding a number eight, where we would say something to the effect of, "Some limit of homework may be sent per grade level, may be set per grade level by..."
2330 isn't actually on the agenda.
2330 is not showing up?
No.
It's not on the agenda.
Because we still have to debate, we have to debate that in committee.
Okay, I thought we had already done that one.
No, because we had that conver, we didn't know exactly what to...
I'm speeding ahead.
No, it's all right. We still need to have that conversation with Mr. Soto on that, on that item that you just, on that particular item that you brought up, as well as black, I thought we added blackout dates a while back for homework, in terms of...
Yeah, like the secondary holiday and things like that. We did, actually.
They show up on the calendar.
But they're not, they're in the calendar, but they're not in the policy.
Oh.
We took them off the cal, we took them off the calendar in terms of not, we took them off the calendar in terms of not scheduling, you know, school events, but I don't, I don't think that we addressed the homework issue.
Right. So, at one point, we did have blackout dates for homework.
So, like, they couldn't sort of schedule, you know, the band concert on a secondary holiday date, but I don't think that we actually addressed whether or not they could assign, you know, a paper to be...
I actually thought that we did, that we, it was understood that they would not, I mean, teachers would not assign.
Right. I thought we did do that.
But it was not on, it was not on the calendar.
But it was not codified, or...
No, I feel like it was on the calendar. It wasn't put into policy, and that, and it wasn't...
And I actually remember having this discussion where, you know, because the fact is, for any religious holiday, students have the right to have the, you know, have the statutory right to make up the work. We actually don't need to have a policy about it, because there's a statute that addresses this.
So, I think the issue was over, over spring break and winter break, as I recall, and the amount of work that students were given during that period, and we tried to address that with those being some sort of a blackout, blackout time.
I don't think it can be, I don't think it can be a complete blackout. I mean, I think we, I don't, so, yeah.
I just, I just remember us having this conversation, I, it was two, three years ago. But, so, let's discuss this in committee and then make recommendations to the full board.
Okay.
Any other comments?
I had one thing, if you don't mind, on 2310, people grouping.
No, I'm kidding. You always ask me, and in one time, I'm going to have to say no.
Yeah, that's true. Maybe I shouldn't ask anymore. The last paragraph talks about grades nine through 12, placement for honors courses and AP courses.
Yep.
It says it'll be, you know, based on department and teacher recommendation, or self-nomination through the appeals process.
Yes.
This appeals process is fairly onerous. Is there no, is it either teacher recommendation and department recommendation, or you go through this huge process?
It's not as onerous as it sounds. It's normally okay.
Onerous, onerous, sorry.
Yeah.
Real, okay.
I mean, there is a documenta, there's a documented record that has to happen, but it normally is the guidance counselor. I mean, I don't have, I don't have it actually right in front of me, but...
It just means request a council, a conference.
Just go on the chain.
But does the student ever get to say, okay, is there ever an override? Or does the student...
So, appeals in this district, and it's a cultural thing, always happen. I mean, always are approved.
They always win? Okay, okay. I mean, the one thing I worry about...
Would you ever, would you ever fight, stop fighting?
But, but they do actually have to sign an agreement about, you know, they have to sign an agreement that sort of recognizes that, you know, that the onus is then on them to perform.
Yep.
Right. And the reason is, I was thinking about this, is because I think on the Middle States thing, which I realized was on a different agenda item, and I missed it, one of the, one of the objectives, objectives had to do with increasing, you know, the percentage of African-American and Hispanic children in AP, not children, students in AP and honors classes, and I think that the reviewer was like, "I look forward to seeing your actual plan for doing this." I mean, I know the board has been working on an actual plan for doing this for many years.
Well, I have to tell you, I mean, yeah, we have done it. We have actually, we have allocated money to it. We have had many plans.
I know.
I mean, it's not, it's not that we have just, we've been threatening to make a plan. There have been plans.
That's what I was trying to say. I was trying to say, I know that this board has been doing this, the last time we talked about this, I think Catherine pointed out that this has been on the board's radar for many, many years. So, I preface my comments by saying, I realize that, and what I say may seem hopelessly naive and already tried and didn't work, but it seems to me that, I mean, this is, in terms of encouraging kids to take these classes who normally wouldn't take them, maybe this is one place where we could make it a little bit easier for kids and parents to do.
It's pretty easy.
It's really easy.
But there's four conferences here, I mean...
Only if you don't get the answer you want.
Oh, if you don't get the answer you want?
It's not number one. I mean, what they're saying is nobody's made to go through the conference.
It's really, I want to, it's really, I want to take this class, and then you sign this document and...
You know, I mean, I think that there, I don't think it's quite that easy. I mean, I think that any guidance counselor would, you know, would sort of try to help you evaluate what the pros and cons of moving ahead against the recommendations of a teacher might be, but, but it is an onerous process.
Right, okay. I mean, Mike, I see what you mean.
I get what you're saying, I do get what you're saying, though.
If there's any energy in the board, among other board members, to maybe make this a little bit less even seemingly onerous, even if it's not really onerous, then I would, you know, I would love to move to amend the policy, but I'm not seeing any energy, so I will be quiet.
I just don't see what, how you would change it.
Yeah.
I mean, do you have a suggestion for how it would be changed? Because really, it's like, go talk to your teacher, you know, if your teacher hasn't given you the recommendation, then they're probably not going to say, okay, so then you go talk to your guidance counselor, you know, like, how would you, I don't know.
That's normally where it ends, is at the guidance counselor.
I think what ends, it's saying, and I would completely support it, is that there is some piece missing in terms of encouragement, that maybe the students are not encouraged to do so.
That's not true.
Okay. It doesn't appear that in the policy.
Superficially, superficially.
Right, superficially.
Right, yeah. So, it just doesn't appear that way in the policy.
In meetings with...
You can't really write encouragement into a policy.
Well, you can take out discouragement.
Yes, you can take out discouragement, but in, so each student has an individual meeting with their guidance counselor in high school and middle school. In middle school as well?
Not in middle school.
Not in middle school.
Not, not, just, sorry, just high, just high school. And in that meeting, that's where the encouragement happens, and that's where the conversation happens. And when they're dissatisfied with that conversation, then the process starts. Yeah, moves forward.
I mean, you raise a good question. I'm not sure how to make it less difficult. I mean, maybe have like one fewer step or something like that. I mean, the reason, one reason I am concerned about it is because, you know, we, we went to that Talk of the Town meeting that Ashton Burrell organized, and, you know, a student did talk about, this is not involving the guidance counselors who are currently employed here, but a guidance counselor in a year or two past.
It's true.
Right, counseling people out of classes. And so, this superficially, if a student wasn't familiar with all this, like you are, they might think, oh, jeez, this is really hard, plus my friend, you know, said he got counseled out, you know, I think I'll just drop it.
But where else would the kid go?
Well, maybe to, like, their teacher, and then end it there.
No, but it's the teachers that making the placement.
Right, but does it, does the person, I mean, maybe not make it, I don't know.
So...
It seems like, it makes it look like there's four steps I might have to go through to do this. That seems like a lot to me, so I'm just going to bag it. So, how about just request a teacher with a conference with a teacher, the teacher explains to the kid, you know, I don't think you're ready, but you want to sign this form? Fine. It's a one-step process.
The teacher, the teacher, the teacher can't, the teacher's already decided they don't think the kid can do it.
Well, let's get rid of number one, then. Request a conference with a teacher. Then there's only three steps. I mean, if number one is fool for us, no, really, I mean...
It may be a problem, and so it should be something we look at, but I don't think we can fix it right now, unless we have a plan.
Right. My plan would be get rid of number one, since the teacher already made the decision, and maybe stop after the guidance counselor, number two. That would be my proposal.
Isn't that proper protocol, is to first have the conversation with the person who made the decision?
But she just said that that was already made, so that wouldn't be...
Yeah, but you, the, if you speak to the teacher, that could also change.
And that usually does happen, in fact. Students go to the teacher and say, "Why don't you think I'm ready for this?"
And that, and that provides them with information to when they do go to the guidance counselor.
Yeah, it's contextual, too, you know, you...
You want to be part of the decision.
You actually need to have that information, why the teacher doesn't think you should be in a, you know...
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought they already told you. I see, I see what you mean. Well, if there was, I mean, my proposal would be get rid of three and four, then. You know, teacher, guidance counselor. But I'm not seeing a lot of other support for that.
If there's a way we can streamline it, I think I'm, I'm hearing what Ann is saying, is to stream...
You have to have a kid that goes through it, so you can see what it's like, but I share the concern that maybe a lot of non-white or non-rich kids don't get encouraged, so that is a problem.
I think that's, that's the concern.
Right. And so, that's something we need to address.
I don't think the process is doing it, but I think the practice may be doing it.
And I think the board, the board itself has put, as you've said, put a ton of money behind it.
Of course.
And also have put it on the board goals as something, and it's just something that we haven't been able to overcome, so...
I mean, no disrespect to the board.
No, no, I don't, no, I didn't take, I just want to inform the community as well as the, this is something that literally Board Goal One two years ago was encourage more diversity within our honors and AP courses. That was Goal One of this board.
Right, okay.
Well, so, I mean, I guess I do hear Ann's point. Could we just make it where step two is the end of it? If a kid has talked to the teacher, the teacher has said, you know, these are the reasons, I don't recommend you, then the kid goes to the guidance counselor. Can we just make it that, I mean, if a kid is feeling that strongly that they want to take the next step, then the kid should be given the paper there and...
So, then why, but then why have the meeting at all?
What do you mean?
To get information. The guidance counselor provide information, like, look, you failed every math class, why do you want to be in calculus?
You're saying to just, if, once they go to the guidance counselor, it's approved?
Yeah, once it goes to the guidance counselor, it's...
So, there's no approval or denial by the guidance counselor?
So, this is actually, I think this is really, so, in the unlikely event that the guidance counselor does not agree to, you know, that this just gives the child more avenues of, of appeal. I mean, it's actually, it's actually for the kid, not, it's not to keep the kid out of the class, it's actually to give the kid every avenue to get into the class.
I would...
I'm not going to take it up to the superintendent if I'm a kid that's, you know, busy and working.
I would say that the way the policy is right now is probably where it needs to be, and probably very appropriate, and where we probably need to make the changes in the student manual. And have the student manual address specifically what a student might need to do, and make that with a language that's more encouraging, and it provides an avenue for the student to look at it and read it and understand it and go, oh, wait, this is what I could do if I don't think I'm in the right class.
I think that's right.
And I think that's an exactly right point. Also, is that, I don't know if every student knows that they have the right to appeal, and that can be...
That was my question.
That could be highlighted in the student handbook.
And looking at the student manual right now quickly, it's just, it's...
Yeah, because the kid's probably not going to go to a policy.
No, we know that. They're not reading these policies.
That's a good point.
They're not going to read the policy, first of all, and second of all, they're not going to have parents that read the policy.
Exactly.
Possibly.
But when they're bored in class, they'll read their student handbook, because that's what I did.
That, to that point, though, do we have the student handbook available on the website?
Online, yes.
Because I noticed that in this wonderful new website, that we have the ability to translate, and it's a good enough translation. I checked the Italian, it's fine. So, if I were an Italian-speaking parent, I would go to the website and be able to find that information easily, and, you know, kudos to the website design, I really like it. But I think that that's, Rob's point is exactly spot-on.
Right, so, I think...
Is that it needs to be accessible information, not just accurate.
We all, I think we all agree on that.
Right.
And by the way, they are, they are on the website, the student handbooks.
Do we know if the website can translate PDFs, or is it only like HTML? Yeah, okay. Too specific.
I don't think, I don't, we don't know.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
But PDFs are unlockable these days.
It's just an image on, we say...
Right, no, I've never come across one that did, but, you know, It's Fantastic is on there.
All right. Chris, I'm sorry, we can't.
Oh, sorry.
There is a student handbook.
Yeah. Any other questions on policy?
There was a...
Yep.
An addition that we missed. When we were in committee, we talked about an addition to the policy 2110. The last paragraph, we had talked about adding...
Yep.
Something about in-service training. Shall be encouraged by the board to assist staff in recognizing cultural differences of all students. The staff shall treat all students with respect, especially when students display a need for understanding based on race, religion, developmental, you know, level.
It's not in there?
It's not in there.
Okay. I'm, I'm supportive of that document, of that statement, so...
Can I hand this to you, Lynda?
Yeah, I mean, so any changes that you make will be reflected on second reading, and that's when, that's when it really matters. So, we'll add those, we can still move it tonight with the, with the assumption that these changes will be presented to the board on second reading.
Okay.
All right. Anything else?
That was it.
Okay, thank you. The Board, the Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. Please state your name and sign in, and make your public comment, please.
I will request again, as I did last time, if you're talking about the budget, please provide us with specific areas that you would like to...
We don't, we don't talk the budget, just ask.
So, we're not doing any budget?
No.
Good.
The same applies to other areas.
I mean, people can talk about the budget if they want to.
Specific examples are helpful.
Yep.
We're done. We're done. Let her on. I think there'll be some talk about it.
My name is Michael Greenberg, and I live at Montgomery Street. Good evening. Like to speak this evening about an important topic which has arisen that has the potential destroyed, to destroy the academic and emotional well-being of some of our children with special needs. The CTT, or Inclusion Classroom, is one of the most effective developments in progressive education. It isn't just a feel-good approach, it actually works. Unbelievably, there is a proposal on the table to scrap the model for an unproven one without the research to support the new model. For those who may be unfamiliar, CTT stands for Collaborative Team Teaching and refers to the idea of a co-teaching partnership of a general education and special education teacher. teacher. The classroom has a mix of students, both with and without IEPs, and taught by the partnership. There were no more than usually 12 children with IEPs in the classroom, and the rest made up of general ed students. The CTT model currently in place in the Highland Park Public Schools has been and continues to be the focus of many research studies by educational policymakers. The research proves time and time again that the students are academically successful and emotionally thrive in nearly all the schools nationwide in which it's implemented. The model of a full-day general education and special education teacher is often lauded by students, parents, and teachers alike. And perhaps the most significant, it provides special-needs students with the ability to interact with the general education population, both academically and socially. I'm not sure, but I haven't been able to find any studies that show how this proposed model is more effective than the other models. I've done some research myself and come up empty. Yet I've been able to find countless studies that show the success of the full-day collaborative team teaching model. Allow me to cite just one of the many. In a 2007 study, "Co-Teaching and Inclusive Classrooms," a metasynthesis of qualitative research, published in the Journal of Exceptional Children, confirmed our parents and teachers' finding that the program is successful, with the study stating that co-teachers generally supported co-teaching, although a number of important needs were identified. Including planning time, student skill level, and training, many of these needs were linked to administrative support. We must make sure that this isn't the real reason the proposal for change isn't on the table, that our inclusion teachers are fully supported in the ways mentioned. Our parents seem to feel that the model is being implemented effectively. Shouldn't we take that into account? I have not heard one parent speaking at any of the recent board meetings that had a problem with the model already in place. Let's not return to the days not so long ago, when the parents of Highland Park were ignored. We all know what a fiasco that turned into. Interestingly enough, I did come across something in my research that the board members might want to become aware of. In court cases involving the IDEA and providing a least restrictive environment for a student, the burden of proof will be on a district to show that the disadvantages of the current model will outweigh the advantages of a proposed model, if a parent chooses to file a complaint. I'm not so sure that this is something the board wants to take lightly. As many of you know, I've been a teacher for the New York City Department of Ed for about 18 years. I'm currently an elementary science specialist, where as part of my program, I co-teach in two different CTT classes, as we call them. With not a paraprofessional, but a full-time special education teacher. We use different strategies. Last year, in addition to the CTT classes, I co-taught science using the NEST model from NYU, where children on the spectrum were integrated into general education classes with no paraprofessional, just a general education and a special education teacher, again, using the different teaching strategies. Prior to that, when I was in the classroom, I co-taught as the general educator in a CTT class on the second grade and fourth grade levels. The general education teacher, myself, and the special education teacher were full-day teachers. In all of these experiences, the co-teacher and I were given time for common planning. When one walked into the room, people were unable to tell which child had an IEP, which did not, based on the procedures and format of the classroom. Isn't this the ultimate goal of the CTT model? So if the administrators feel that the program is not being implemented correctly, we need to look at how the model can be strengthened instead of changed. Professional development is the key to creating a well-oiled machine. I know, teachers here hear the words PD and they start twitching and convulsing. I know, I've been there. I've been to many PD sessions that cost a small fortune, and let me tell you honestly, they've left me more baffled than when I walked in. It doesn't need to be that every teacher is sent out of the building. Mr. Soto, I'm sure when you were in New York City, you remember Robert Slaven and the SFA Model, those professional development sessions, or when the Aussies came to town, or when we traveled to Teachers College for lectures by Lucy. The looks on the faces from some of those teachers who walked out of there were priceless. Let me suggest two solutions: turnkey training and classroom intervisitation. There's no need to spend an arm and a leg on professional development. You send one or two teachers who are effective public speakers and effective learners, willing to go to the PD, using the gathered information, turnkey the information, to create a presentation for the staff. This is the most effective form of professional development that will strengthen a program. I'm sure that there are teachers in the Highland Park Public Schools who have the desire and the talent to fulfill this, as a turnkey trainer and one CTT classroom, at least one, that is highly effective. We can then have intervisitation. I'm sure the proposal to change is well-intended, but to the members of the Board of Education, it would be a major mistake with severe consequences to change a successful CTT program that is in place. Look at the research. Listen to the parents of the students who are actually in the CTT classrooms. Don't fix what isn't broken. Thank you.
Thank you.
I had one question, the blackout days, are you guys, because I noticed the last two years we didn't have them anymore. Are we talking about putting them back in, or are we talking about continuing to keep them out?
Putting them back in.
I would support that, because as a student that observes the religious Jewish holidays, the work backs up to a point where it takes weeks and weeks for the student to catch up. Thank you for doing that. The second thing I wanted to talk about was the pupil grouping in 2310. You talk about the different procedures with one requested teacher with, a conference with the teacher who made the placement. The problem with that being step one is you forgot step point five, which is that the teacher actually has to create the recommendation and actually give it to the parent. That was missing out of like 50% of the teachers that my student had this year. He never received his recommendation until after he was already sitting down with the guidance counselor, which was way too late to go through any of these other steps. The second step is the guidance counselor. At least with my son, we were given a sheet that said all of the courses, and I sat down with my son with the recommendations that we did receive, and we filled out the form and we went over it together and we discussed it, and with the teachers that gave the recommendation, we talked about the pros and the cons, et cetera, et cetera. And then when he sat down with his guidance counselor, his guidance counselor just did something completely different and completely ignored what me and my son had talked about, which did not give confidence to me nor my son in the guidance counselor. I do not agree with what you were saying, Anne, about getting rid of step number one, because I do think that the first critical step is to talk with the teacher, to answer the basic question, why do you feel that my child is not ready to take the honors course? Because, at least when I was talking with one of my teachers that gave the recommendation, I learned a lot about the process, I learned a lot about the course sequence, the pros and the cons, his professional experience, all that kind of information was very useful and made me very confident in what I ended up deciding for my child. The last point is, is that the guidelines that are used to determine which students go into honors and which students go into regular classes, although there is a document that is created, it is not generally given to the parents. Most parents never see this document, do not even know it exists. The only reason I know this document exists is because when I was talking with my son's math teacher, he emailed me the document. Otherwise, I would not even know it existed. And the one thing I wanted to say about the collaborative classrooms is, in any collaborative classroom, you're going to have borderline kids, kids that are not 100% general ed and kids that are not 100% special education with IEPs, but kids that may have some issues that they need help with, but they're not tagged. At least I know with one of my children, that he was falling through the cracks, and I worry that when you're going to this pull-out method, although, as she said, for some students that's going to be the perfect solution for them, I worry that if we only have one teacher at a time with a mixture of kids that are special ed and regular kids, then you're going to end up with more kids that are going to fall through the cracks. Not intentionally, but it's just, if you only have a certain number of amount of time in the day, how much time can that teacher dedicate to each child? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public?
Robert Katz, 299 B South 11th. With the collaborative teaching, just a couple of comments. As a parent of a third-grade special needs child, as well as a special education teacher for 14 years. One comment, as a professional, I was a little insulted by the presentation when it was implied that a paraprofessional could replace a special education teacher in the classroom. As wonderful as paraprofessionals are, and they definitely are an important part of the special education program, they do not have the knowledge or expertise or experience that a special education teacher has. I am a full-inclusion teacher, I do support social studies and science, and I, to be honest, don't feel that a paraprofessional could do the job that I do. As a parent, the same applies with my son. I know what my son needs, and I am very hesitant to allow a paraprofessional to only supply the experiences and the assistance that my son may need in social studies and science, where I really would want an experienced teacher who went through the training and knows the techniques and has the strategies to help my son in those subjects. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Kfir Fisher, I'm from 52 Highland Avenue. I just want to touch about technology. I understand that Brian is not here. Would I be correct, I don't know if Chris can help with answering some of the questions in regards to his presentation? So may I ask what the cost of the system that we are doing?
What are we, we allocate, we budgeted, um, this website?
The website, Sharp School's system, and the server that we are, want to put there. So the server is 8,000 something here.
So the server has something to do with the Power School program?
Yeah.
It's not, it's a different program than what we?
I understand, because it's, it's, it's together, am I right?
No.
Correct me if I'm wrong?
So they're not together? You can view Power School through the website, but they are different.
Okay. The cost of the website?
The cost of the website was allocated in the previous year's budget. Off the top of your head?
I believe it was $7,000, the cost of the website, and that was a one-time, right? And then it'll decrease next year?
Yes.
Okay. And can you tell me what technology used to build the website?
Chris.
Chris, you have the, I'm sorry?
It's a hosting company.
It's a hosting company.
Yeah.
Okay, and, but we're designing it, am I right?
We're not designing it ourselves, the company.
The company designed everything.
Chris, I need, if we want to have Chris answer, we got to use the mic. Yeah.
Did the school, I know there are some talented people in this school as students. Did ever somebody occur to ask a student to create the website, or zero?
So this is a job that needed to be done by a professional, but they, they were included in the process.
Is the website mobile-friendly?
Yes, it's a responsive website, because Google and their search engine now is not going to do unresponsive sites.
Right.
So we built a responsive website, and the app is going to be the same way. The app will have a dummy-down version of the website, will tell exactly what parts we want to see.
Okay, so the server that you guys ordered, that for 8,000 something, for the, that's for the Sharp School?
Power School.
Power School, sorry, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, the Power School server has to do with this. Our current server is six years old. Power School, in their latest releases, are not going to, our server can't handle the latest releases of Power School. We knew that, so we kept adding on the misogyn, what we had, and we knew when we went to the latest version of Power School, we were going to be at a technology standstill. So they are cutting support from our version now. So to go to the new version, which allows more enhancement for stuff that we need, we need to move along with the new server. We built a server that's expandable, so it'll get us another six to eight years out there. And the new features of Power School that we're going to get are going to be really great for administration and teachers, so we need to move on to it. And actually, it's going to be better off for the parents also, because now we're going to do single sign-on server, where you'll be able to have all your students' information. If you have multiple students, no matter what grade, what school they're in, all in one portal.
Did you consider a free CMS system, like Joomla and all the other?
Well, we worked with Power School on this for their recommendations for what their future releases are, because you have state reporting issues, you have the Oracle issues along with it, so this was designed with them and recommendations, and we went back and put it together back and forth.
But you and Brian, as professionals, did not even look at the option of getting a free CMS system?
No, no, hold on, hold on, I got it, Chris, so the.
I can ask you the same question. As professionals, somebody needs to give justification for spending so much money for the program.
So the Power School program is a program that our parents have used, and our teachers use as a learning management system that provides a number of different parts of information to our parents and to our students. It's a program that is worth, it's worth the cost.
Yes. Do you know that there are, for schools, K-12, free CMS systems?
There are free systems that do not do what is, what is needed.
Because, I'm going to tell you why.
Yes.
Because, because there need professional people to operate them, like Chris and Brian, and whoever is doing their IT here.
Mm-hmm.
That's probably you guys not doing enough. May I ask how many people are doing the IT in the school, except for Brian?
We have Brian, and then we have two other staff members who are in the IT department.
So there is Jody, and is it Chris? And that's it?
Part-time, so we have one full-time, we have one full-time, which is Jody, and a part-time person, and that's not Chris.
It's not Chris?
No.
Did you look on the Power School to get it hosted on the cloud, instead of buying?
So the cloud is an issue for school districts, they have, there has to be a certified cloud that is in the United States.
It is, okay.
And most clouds are not hosted.
Do you know that Power School themselves hosting it online?
I don't know, yep.
Yes, yes, we did that. We looked at the perspective. It's $6,500 a year for Power School to host it. So when you look at the long run, it was cheaper to buy the server ourselves and maintain it here. We did, we did look at that.
I don't know what module you told them, but I got a really, like, half the price in that, maybe even less than half the price than what you just quoted me.
At Power School?
Yes.
Power School is a company that is their own hosting service.
Yes.
And we went out to, that's their standard cost.
If you can share the quote with me, I'm going to be a very happy person. The same goes to the quote for the server for $87,000, that, what you guys ordered, and why. And the same, it's not, it's not here, so I'm not going to comment on all the switches and all the lines that, from the past presentation, that I did not get a chance to visit the school, by talking with Brian and emailing with him, and some of you guys were CC'd on those emails. Basically, there's no way that I'm, as a citizen here, I care about the taxpayer mind, I care about the education here, I don't want to cancel anything on the budget, I just want, just justification why we need to, maybe Chris can tell us why we need all those switches upgraded. I don't know if he's.
I would not be able to. Yeah.
Okay, so I'm, I really just hope the corporation, I'm not going to be, I'm not a state vendor, so I'm not, there's no conflict of interest of me coming and meeting with Mr. Humphrey and seeing why there is a need to change. I understand a server that is seven years old and getting a new server, 100% understand that.
Okay.
If it can be more transparent, a lot of people will be very happy.
I think we've been quite transparent with what we're using.
I didn't get even one line item except for the server, but I don't see what the server contains, so if it's a hard drive that costs $1,000, or a hard, or a hard drive that costs $100, that makes a whole difference on how much a server should cost the school.
All right, thank you. Thanks, Chris.
Hi, Havah Friday, 62 Grand Avenue. Just a couple of questions, so I'll try and keep them brief. One comment, just in terms of all the discussion we've had about special education, there's been no mention of the general education teachers. So for me, as a science teacher who's worked as in a collaborative co-teaching model several times, the idea that, oh, for science, they can be fine with paraprofessionals, is number one fundamentally insulting, and number two, it's just not true. I've been so blessed to work with really excellent special education teachers who worked primarily with science, knew the content really well, and you could just say, oh, we're doing that experiment today, and they could, in an instant, help students. And when you're working with students doing experiments, and most experiments that are really fun involve some level of danger, you, you want people as qualified as humanly possible to be helping you out. So the idea that, well, for science, they're okay, just with a paraprofessional, I'd like to hear that they're getting science teacher input, and that the science teachers, from a general education perspective, feel that that's really going to be adequate for their students' needs. My next question was in regard to C on the agenda under personnel. We're going to be voting on, well, you guys get to vote, I get to watch you vote, on half a, what looks like pretty much every salary in the district. Obviously, the teacher salaries have already been set by the teacher contract, and that's just a formality. My question was in terms of all the administrative and support staff salaries that are listed there. Is this actually like a meaningful vote, or has that all been predetermined and you don't have a choice anyway, you have to vote? Yes?
They're all contractual.
Okay, so my concern was how we ended up with a contract, a contract where for administrators, we're giving them 7.8% increases this year. I couldn't get access to all of the salaries from last year.
Who's getting that, who's getting that increase?
So I feel a little uncomfortable, because I don't want to draw attention to anyone specifically, but I was trying to look up the salaries from last year, and I, you know the, the old meeting and agendas are a mess, it's very hard to find anything, so I was limited to what is included on the user-friendly budget, and if you compare the user-friendly budget numbers from 2014 to 2015, okay?
Those are two years old.
Those are two years old?
Yes.
So the ones that appear on the 2015 to 2016 budget that was put up two weeks ago don't match tonight's, because those were last year's?
Correct.
Okay, well, that is a very easy explanation, thank you. So I'm glad nobody's getting a 7.8% raise.
No.
So that is good to know, thank you. And then the last question, and I really brought this mostly for the benefit of Mr. Soto and Linda Hoffel, because they don't live in town. One of the things that I think is great that our town does, is when we get our tax bill in July, we don't just get a bill, here, pay $1,000 more, have a good day. The mayor takes the time to write a really nice letter explaining, you know, what great things the town's doing, and what changes have been had to Ming, and basically telling a story for how we got to the increase. Because even though I've been very involved as much as I can throughout the budgeting processes here, there's never sort of been a big picture explanation of, well, why do we have to raise it this much this year? You know, people see, okay, we're suing Hattika, they're like, Hattika is why we're raising tuition, you know, taxes 3.5% for the schools. It's like, it's not just Hattika, there's no way they can be spending that much money on Hattika. So people tend to lose the big picture, because there is no real explanation of the big picture. And if you look at the way the mayor does the letter, they have a nice pie chart that tries to pass off most of the blame on the school district, because you're 60% of the taxes, and then at the end of last year's letter, it says, you know, the largest portion of our taxes supports our district schools. This year, the school's portion of the overall budget is 61%, reflecting an annual increase of approximately $421 for the average borough home. This was last July. As you know, the Board of Education is a completely separate entity from municipal government. If you have any questions regarding the school taxes for the coming year, please contact Superintendent Timothy Campon at the phone number.
Yeah.
So I think it would be really great if you could take a look at this letter. I have copies for everybody, but if you have them at home.
So that's, this is probably my fault. Normally, the board president does provide that detail.
Right, so I think it would be wonderful, Adam, Mr. Soto, if you two could work together and draft a letter of this type of content regarding the schools, either ask the tax collector to include it with the letter from the borough, or you have a great website, if you want to do YouTube video and do it your own way, that's great, too. And then the second page that I include. And then the second page that I included was just my personal tax bill, because it's the tax bill I have handy, because I know there were some concerns last week where you were quoting rates that are inconsistent with what appears on our bills. So I wanted to make sure that the professional staff who don't, you know, live in Highland Park, I mean, never have seen a Highland Park tax bill, are familiar with how the rates are represented to us. So we see the school tax rate as a single number that includes both the debt tax levy and the general tax levy. So it's very important that if you're going to put tax rates up, they should, you know, either, there should be a clear explanation, because I was very frustrated last week when we were shown one rate that was inconsistent with what we're being billed. And, you know, I did the first round where I emailed the tax collector, I emailed Linda Hoffel, and neither of them could explain what the discrepancy was. Thankfully, Adam was able to. But we shouldn't have to get into those issues to begin with. So, thank you.
Thank you. And in terms of communications, we'll try to work on something to get out.
That's a great suggestion. Thank you, Havah.
There's some comments that I have, or the kind of-
Can you jellies all? I live at 366 North Fourth Avenue.
Thank you.
What I'm going to say is probably a little disjointed, so bear with me. One thing that I am always a little nervous about is if there are going to be changes to anything, that we have interim people amongst us. And I'm not sure what that means. Does it mean we have a time limit with our interim directors? Could someone ask her that question for me? What does it mean?
So-
Oh, yeah, I'm asking what interim means in relationship to the people who have these positions.
So interim is a legal term by the state of New Jersey. It means that they can be in the position for two years.
And how long, Mr. Soto, have you been in your position?
Mr. Soto's contract will end September 30th.
Of this year?
Of this year.
Mr. Shalala?
Mr. Shalala, is there a question?
Yes, the question of how long has Mr. Shalala been in his position? Oh, yes. We have one year and four months starting?
About.
I'm sorry, I really am. Mr. Shalala?
You have to address questions to myself.
Oh, yes, hello.
Yes. So Mr. Shalala-
So Mr. Shalala has how much longer?
He's been here for about a little over a year.
Okay. So we're looking at, when is his contract ending?
His contract is a, I believe his contract's a day-to-day contract. No, it's up to, he was renewed.
Of next year?
Yeah. July next year.
Okay. So we might have some changes coming along, maybe not. But, so my concern always is the perpetuation of something new as somebody else comes in, as we noticed a great transition from the last transition we made. So that makes me nervous. But I also think that in order to see change, sometimes we have to make change, and that's really scary.
Yeah.
So that's what I've been hearing, and that's what I'm feeling. I'm really glad we have Policy 2110. That was really exciting because I have something that is really important to me, and I'm hoping it's important to a lot of people. I've noticed this year that sometimes it's difficult to, for some people, to see that there's a connection between, well, let me go back. What I understood from what Mr. Shalala was saying is that we're hoping to put in a behavioral plan of sorts for kids who are finding a challenge in that area. I don't know if it was just for middle school and high school, but to start recognizing behavioral issues and that children really do need some support in that area. One of the things that my child experienced when he was very young, it was pointed out that the good news about having special education for him in a pre-K setting was that his level of frustration was very high. And they were concerned about, at that time, that it would get in the way of his education. So let's fast forward that about six, seven years, and we're running up against a situation where it appears that the administration can have a really big impact of how a child perceives their place in that setting. They can, the child with behavioral issues, there's a way to bring them down and there's a way to prop them up. When we fall as adults, hopefully we learn the skills of helping ourselves get up. When a child is going through school, they're looking for other people than just the parent to help them up. If somebody in the administration, who's very powerful in their minds, find a way of punishing them for falling rather than finding ways for them to grow, that child will come away pained, possibly destroyed, hopefully not, because they have all these other people outside of the school system and within the school system who support them. But there are going to be children who are faced with the administration, the higher administration, who really depend on them to say, boy, you know, we have some rules. Those rules are hard to hold on to, and they're hard to follow. But we really know that you can have the ability, and we'll do what we can for you, to get back up. We're not going to punish you for it, but we're going to say, good job. And it's going to be hard, and you might not make it again, but we're going to keep reminding you. Punishment does not do that for that child. I'm concerned about that. So in the philosophy, I think it's the last paragraph that talks about, develop in themselves attitudes of respect and helpfulness towards others. I propose that somewhere in here, that it is stated that administrative folks are held as accountable, as teachers, as parents, as whoever else is in their lives in school, that the administrators are held accountable for that. There are many, especially for special ed, but hey, there are a lot of general ed kids who are not quite classified, who need that kind of support as well. So that's what my proposal is, look at the philosophy statement and start adding that in. I liked what the last speaker said about the science class, where if the special ed teacher isn't in there to know how to work with the particular students, that could be a major issue. The other thing is that some learners, some people, whether they're general ed or special ed, are different learners. This system, in my mind, is quite broken. Again, general ed, special ed, it doesn't matter. But when you start to remove the special ed teachers, if the general eds are not qualified yet or don't have the training necessary to take care of the special ed kids during those classes, then it's a lot of onus on the general ed teacher to pick up the slack if, let's say, it's a behavioral problem mixed in with a special ed problem, or just a behavioral problem with the non-special ed student. So people can fall through the cracks quickly. That's a concern of mine in this suggestion. As far as the website is concerned, it looks like, you know, people put good effort in it and everything else. My concern is kind of for the underdog. If people don't own computers, if they don't have access to computers, if they need to use a library computer, which I experienced today, it was so slow, I couldn't, it was too hard to tolerate. How are they going to, in the middle school, high school, they're now going to be communicating with their teachers via this? Is this one of the promoted ways? Because if it is, they're going to be kids missing out. Are we addressing that?
So in terms of connectivity at home, about five or six years ago, we did a study. There's less than 1% of our population who do not have access at home in some capacity. For those who do not, we do provide computers during the day for them.
If you recall, I sent you and Israel, there's a program also called Jersey On, which is, has been started, I think, just within the last year, that is specifically geared towards that issue. So that's something, you know, we need to make sure that it'll get parents, but it can also help parents get, families that can't afford them get devices as well, get connectivity and get devices. So that's information that I think we need to get out to our parents and-
I think Israel was working with the contact that you had sent over.
Great.
Just out of curiosity, how did you get to that percentage?
I forget how we did it. It was a survey. Yeah, it was a survey.
Okay.
Hopefully not online.
Right. No, it's serious. It's actually very true. Yeah. I think we take a lot for granted, the people who have access, a lot. And it concerns me. I don't see a lot of mixture of people here. It worries me.
Yep.
Yeah. As far as maintaining the website, so I was talking with my friend, and we were brainstorming. I don't know if it's possible to have people maintain the website through the schools, students.
So there is an aspect of that, but to maintain the website in a professional way that is always updated and reliable, there is a professional service that is needed in my opinion.
I guess what I'm talking about is maybe the pages, you're learning how to update pages if it's not critical, could be a part of the curriculum.
So we do need a programming course and a coding course, which we don't have, to support that. But, you know, I think we're more than happy to have students work with Chris to learn the software and learn the systems to update.
So that could be maybe extra points on their scale? Let me just make sure I got it.
Right. Well, that is another good point. There is fundamental issue with, there is a fundamental issue with letting students have access to the website.
Okay.
There is a lot of confidential material that happens and a lot of communication that-
Kids are kids if they want it.
It's just something to consider. I mean, you can look at the whole picture and say, what of this may we, you know, can we include? Maybe it's design, maybe it's-
I don't disagree with that part.
It's just being creative with, for students' purposes. Okay. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public?
Couple of points. To the guy that gave us the presentation before, I'd just like to know if anybody has the answer. How many school districts in New Jersey have this model that he's presenting to us?
I don't know. I don't know off the top of my head.
Well, you've-
Not one.
What is it?
Well, hold on, hold on. Do we want, do you want to answer, or do you want?
It's not a model.
I think, I think Bill was very clear by indicating that it's not a model. We're not fitting kids to a model, we're fitting kids to services.
Okay. Okay. Therefore, my assumption, I hope all of you too, that if they're going to, if you guys are going to implement it, it's going to be like guinea pigs, those kids. And I agree with a host of those guys, with this lady as well. It's not broken. And if it's broken, let's fix it, not change it. Next. Adam, schools, especially 12th grade, 11th grade, very sophisticated enough, they don't need any programming. I was kind of puzzled when you said they may need, they need some programming. You don't need the programming to update a website. And it's a great challenge for them. Not even a challenge. Those guys already build their own websites. I think they should give them the chance and the challenge, and to leave the high school with quite an achievement of running, actually, the website. There is nothing confidential because everything is up on the screen, it's readable to anybody. You can, somebody can put the password, and they'll let them update it. I, only one comment left, and I'm not combative. I've been watching the discussion, the whole host of the discussion among you guys at the beginning. None of you held the committee that we're supposed to do. None of you guys. Yet you guys coming here with no answers, no discussions, and only two people I see, two or maybe three people, taking notes and considering the comments coming by the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
I think their website is awesome. Thank you. I reserve my opinion on Mr. Shalala's presentation. I'm open for suggestions. I have a special needs kid. He was, has been in collaborative classrooms. He's never been in a resource room. That's not what his issues are. I don't want to go into entirely what all his issues are. But we've availed ourselves of the special services. I also have a general education child, and she's doing fine. I have lived in this town by choice for, since 1993. My taxes are over $14,000. They're going up. I'm not thrilled by that, but you know what? I pay to live in this town and not in other towns. It's a good town. We can walk everywhere. I like living here. I like the people who live here. I generally like everybody here. I like the fact that we have so many people from all walks of life here. Yes, it would be nice to see some people of non-white persuasion around, but here in the meetings, but they do show up. I think the school board is doing a great job this year so far, and I appreciate all the hard work you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the teachers, of course, are always doing an awesome job. I've never been nothing but happy with the teachers here. I think their union is dynamic and watching out for their interests. I think that our teachers here in Highland Park are vastly underpaid professionals. If it were up to me, they would all get a big raise. Why? Because I couldn't deal with kids. If I was dealing with kids, they'd all be nailed up. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment?
Who's going to follow that?
Seeing as there's no, seeing as there's no public comment, I'd like to move to the board action items. Ms. Berkowitz, can we have the curriculum items, please?
Yes.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Wait, shift gears, shift gears.
You can have them all. Adam? Adam?
Yes. I'm ready.
I would like to move items, excuse me, items one-
Through nine.
-through nine on the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further comment?
Trying to get there, hold on. This is like the slowest computer here.
Can I call?
Yeah, I think we're good. I think we're good.
Linda, roll, please.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simarusti?
Yes.
Excuse me. Ms. Gallin?
Yes.
Yes. Ms. McFadden, DeNicolla?
Yes.
Mr. Roslowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes. Ms. Bull?
I move items one through 16.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comment? Linda, roll, please.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simarusti?
Yes.
Ms. Gallin?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, DeNicolla?
Yes.
Mr. Roslowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes. Ms. Sherber?
I'd like to move items one through 16, including the correction to 7A.
Second.
Is there any comment? Linda, roll, please. Linda Rolle, please.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simarusti?
Yes.
Ms. Gallin?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, DeNicolla?
Yes.
Mr. Roselwitz?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes. Ms. Sherber, again?
I'd like to move item one on the, on the policy agenda.
With agreed upon changes?
With the agreed upon changes.
Second.
We'll make sure, we'll make sure to have all the changes for second reading so they can be approved. Any comments?
There was just one that, through public comment, I thought we should add to 2310 pupil grouping, that the step point five that was recommended, I think that we might want to discuss that. Teacher recommendation must be created and given to the parent so that the parent is fully apprised of what the teacher recommendation is.
So can, if you, I think that the way to go now would be that if you, for second reading, you can make that correction.
Okay, so we'll see that for next.
The recommendations are, for classes are on Power School. And so that, it's written in what's recommended for next year.
Right.
And the other thing is that there is a full, let's see, when did we just go through this? Because I just went through.
It's normally February.
It's the beginning of May. I think that they set their classes, like the kids chose in the middle of April, last, you know, second to last week of April. They have until June 1st to set that. So there's a full month to talk with parents. Parents can always go into the guidance office and sit down with them and be there when the child discusses. So it may be more a matter of informing than, you know, changing routines.
That being said...
Parents are actually, are specifically invited to the guidance council meetings for scheduling.
So with that being said, though, I don't, I don't disagree that it should not be added to the policy, just to have that codified.
Okay. We can work on the wording for second reading?
Yeah, well, I think we can change that for second reading so we can pass for first reading these policies tonight.
Yep. We'll just add it at the next, at the table, next, next wording.
Sounds good. Okay.
Questions? Any other comments? Yep.
Quick question. The, no, I'm sorry, I'm losing my words. The appeal process.
Yes.
Students want to be in a different class than they were recommended for. They have to go in with a parent or can it just be the student himself?
When I was here, it could be the student themselves.
Okay, then the policy says parent, but...
But the parent has to sign the form. If you are going through the appeal process and you fill out the form, the parent has to sign off on it.
Okay. Then my parent doesn't need to come to every one of those meetings. Okay. Great, thanks.
Roll, please.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simarusti?
Yes.
Ms. Gallin?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, DeNicolla?
Yes.
Mr. Roselwitz?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes. President's report. I do have two items for the president's report. I do want to discuss two items that the board has agreed upon and to update the community as such. One being a new action that the Board of Education is taking and an update on the superintendent search itself and laying out the calendar for the public. I will first address the new action. This past Friday, the Council for Highland Park filed notice of appeal with the appellate division of the Supreme Court, challenging the State Commissioner of Education's recent approval of Hattika International Academy charter schools, application to extend its operations into the middle school grades. The board has previously expressed its opposition to Hattika's expansion application, which threatens to intensify the drain of our scarce resources, likely requiring the loss of additional programming and possibly staff. Last year, Hattika was denied the expansion request due to a decline in the school's academic performance, among other reasons, after substantial public opposition. The school once again applied for an expansion, even though it had not ever, not even filled the 300 seats already approved. The school has not demonstrated an unmet need in East Brunswick Public Schools. In fact, according to the East Brunswick Public School District, Hattika's curriculum has morphed in many ways into a mirror of the curriculum in the eight East Brunswick elementary schools. In the, in this appeal, the board will challenge the reasonableness of the commissioner's approval of the school's expansion and the procedures by which it was granted, which have disenfranchised Highland Park and other districts whose vital resources are at stake. We also will challenge the assessment of tuition from Highland Park for Hattika students, which we contend is beyond the scope of the charter schools legislation itself. We are hopeful that the court will look favorably on our legal arguments and will keep the Highland Park community informed of this litigation moving forward. So I just wanted to inform the Highland Park community of that action that the board has taken on, on the behalf of the community of Highland Park. So next, I'd like to move to the Highland Park superintendent's search. The board met today with the, this association that will be responsible for facilitating the search for the community. We met the individual who will be conducting the search himself, invented him, and we have laid out a calendar that I want to articulate to the community that will be posted on our website as well. As of tomorrow, the advertising for the Highland Park vacant position will be posted. It will be appearing in the Star Ledger on this Sunday, May 10th through the 17th. On May, on or about May 8th, a survey that had been created by, by the, by the firm that is helping us with, with comments from the board will be distributed to the community. On the week of May 8th, May 11th onwards, there will be specific community meetings with groups throughout, throughout our community, culminating in one, one final community-wide meeting, which will solicit input and comments from, from our community. We'll announce, we'll announce details as they become available. On May 26th, the Board of Education will be hosting a, a special public meeting on the presentation of leadership profiles that will include the input from these previous community meetings. That will be presented to the board and to the community in whole. On, on or about June 1st, the consultant will have initial candidate interviews and the first screening process will take place. On or about June 8th, the presentation to the full board will, will happen, of which candidates have made it through the first screening process. On the week, the week of May 15th, and probably in consecutive days, sorry, yeah, June 15th, in consecutive days, the Board of Education itself will, will have their first round of interviews with prospective candidates. Following week, hopefully second round interviews will take place. On the week, on or about, if we can stick to the guidelines of June 29th, the finalists will be presented to the board and we will, the board will be deciding a way to include community, communities in that final screening process. Include the finalists, include the community in the final screening process. And hopefully, with, if this plan goes, if it all goes to plan, we hope to have a superintendent in place by mid-July. This has been a calendar that has been unanimously agreed upon by the board, while it may not be, we might not have the ability to stick to it, to the T. This is our guiding principles for the, for the next two months to guide us in this search. We look to have an inclusive and open process as possible. We will include the community in meetings when, when we, when we feel it is appropriate and we, when we can. But we will, we will also be posting as much information on the website as possible throughout the process. With that, I have no further president's report and I'd like to move to old business, unless anybody wants to say anything. Okay. Old business. Is there any old business?
I would just say that I've asked a few times that we look at the idea of a volunteer grant writer, and I think as we move forward this year, especially with the new services offered by New Jersey School Boards Association, there are a lot of really good opportunities there to bring in some extra income for the district, so...
I think Darcy has brought this up a number of times and we should commit to have this by the next meeting.
Thank you.
Yep. Is there any new business? Is there any other old business?
I also wanted to see if we could revisit the idea of open committee meetings for curriculum and finance, so if we could find some time to talk about that.
So what I will say about that is, the board did debate that about less, probably less than a year ago, and chose not to go in the route of open committee meetings at that time. There is a policy in the handbook, in the policy manual that addresses committee meetings. Any changes to that, I would recommend you bring kind of through that process. But if you want to have the general conversation and see and kind of pull the sense of the board, you're more than welcome to. I just, I know my opinion personally hasn't changed on that in terms of, in terms of committee meetings.
Okay. I guess we can talk about, you know, if anyone else is interested in moving forward with that. I think that would do a lot in terms of opening up avenues of communication and maybe transparency, adding to some, some of the lost trust that's, you know, occurred over the years.
I have to say, I mean, you know that this was something that I tried to push forward last year, was not successful. I think moving forward, it's absolutely the way that we need to go. I think now probably isn't the best time to even consider it. I mean, personally, I would just wait until we have a new superintendent on board and hopefully that process can move through in that way. I think to do it now is almost counterproductive.
Much change.
Yeah, I mean, we've got a superintendent, superintendent search to run, we've got, you know, a lot on our plates, you know, some big changes we're considering in terms of special ed.
Yeah.
I think we've got our plates full right now and a lot to discuss. So I would, I would leave that to the next superintendent personally.
I mean, the commitment that I can make is that we do have ample time in public to discuss conversations that have happened in each committee. I know Claire does a great job of outlining it, Catherine does as well. The personnel committee is obviously the harder, the harder thing, but there is a true full report out for most meetings on what is discussed, not only what is on the agenda, but what is also discussed.
I mean, and I talked about this last year. I mean, the process that I, I heard about at the last New Jersey School Boards Association workshop that I was just absolutely enthralled with was, it really revolved around not doing things the way that we do them now where we meet before meetings. It's setting up meeting times that works for the committee at different times during the, during, you know, the two weeks in between board meetings where there are agendas for each meeting. Those agendas are shared between committees, so people on other committees have an idea of what's happening in the other committees. There's just a lot more communication and a bit, with just slightly more of a time commitment.
Yep.
A lot more information exchange that I think would be very helpful. And also staggering the meetings, the committee meetings with the public meetings so that you have time in between to, to consider things. And I know Linda tries to do that with us, for us with finance, she gives us things that are coming two weeks down the line, which is particularly helpful. But where you're actually having that meeting two weeks ahead, and then you have that two weeks to kind of, you know, mull it over and think about it. So, I mean, moving forward, that's something, something that I would certainly like to move towards. I just don't think this particular moment in time is, is the time.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Okay. Is there any new business?
I have, I have one item. I just want to remind everybody that the Highland Park Education Foundation is having its annual big fundraiser on May 30th. This year, it is a casino night, which I don't know if you have had the opportunity to attend a casino night. They are actually surprisingly fun, and this is from somebody who, who would not have, I mean, you know, we did one for my daughter's prior to graduation. I was sort of dreading the evening. It was a ton of fun. So, you know, as you all know, they are very generous with our teachers and with our students. They provide, they provide educational opportunities that we would not be able to provide otherwise. So if you can support them by attending the event, I encourage you to do so.
Absolutely. You're right.
May 30th? Where?
The high school.
Oh, it's at, it's at the Old Center School.
Oh, that's right.
I'm sorry.
Oh, that's interesting.
So, and can people make a donation even if they can't afford the ticket?
They absolutely can. So you can actually go to the website. I think you can donate online. Is that true? And you can also, I believe, purchase tickets online. But I, also, there are, there are trustees. We have one here, who I think would be happy to take your check and... Don't, okay, don't give him any checks, but, you know, so I think if you decide that you would like to donate, I think that the process is fairly easy, so that shouldn't be the barrier.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. And I was going to announce this and I didn't realize it was a conflict with this other casino night, which sounds like a lot of fun, but it's a good thing you can donate online because you might want to go see the film that the Highland Park Parents of Students of Color are showing on the same night, unfortunately, 4:00 PM. So it might, might be that you do both.
We should talk to them about changing that.
Well, it's, it's, yeah, something that we might want to do because we would want to not conflict if we can help it. But there are showing a really interesting film called American Promise that explores race, class, and opportunity in America, which is something that I think the entire community would enjoy and benefit from.
Casino night starts a lot later than four, so maybe we don't have a conflict after.
Yeah, maybe it's not a conflict.
It generally starts early.
Yeah.
Because there's a dinner involved, right? Six, so it could be tight.
So casino night might be a good night to unwind after a heavy film. Yeah, but this is in the Reformed Church of Highland Park in the quilt room at 4:00 PM on May 30th.
Thank you.
And I have one more.
Yep.
I think Adam sent around an email last week, I believe, that on May 16th, I'll be attending the New Jersey School Boards Association Delegate Assembly. And he sent around the resolution and there's one resolution and one bylaw that are going to be considered, and I wanted to kind of get a sense of, from the board before I go to the delegate assembly, so I'm not just voting what I think, I'm voting the conscience of the board. So I don't know if anybody got a chance to look at that, but the, the basic, to me, it was kind of interesting because the basic idea of the resolution, which is coming out of the Lindenwald Board of Education, was that what happens now is Board of Education elections, or at least most of them in the state, happen in November, and then reorganization meetings don't happen until January, so you have a two-month period of a lame duck session. And their, their resolution would end that and boards would be able to do their reorg meeting...
November.
Two weeks after, within two weeks of the election, which to me makes perfect sense. Their rationale for it, New Jersey School Boards Association seems to be taking issue with, but to me, I don't really, the rationale behind it is not what's interesting to me. What's interesting to me is, you know, I think that two months is too long and I would like to go see it, go back to what it used to be. So, I mean, personally, I would be in favor of voting for this resolution, but, you know, full disclosure, New Jersey School Boards Association, for whatever their reasons are, are actually suggesting that boards oppose it. But then, interestingly, they have a proposed change to their bylaws, which would do exactly this. They are changing their bylaws to decrease the lame duck session for their own board members. So, you know, it's kind of like one hand not knowing what the other hand is doing. But if people, I don't know if anyone did look at it and could give me some feedback now, if not, give me some feedback between now and the 16th.
I looked at it, Darcy, and I had no problem with the proposed resolution.
Okay, great.
Same here.
Good, same here, I think. Do the new members take office sooner or do they take office on January 1st with the reorg?
No, I assumed they, they would take office...
Okay. Yeah, same here. That wouldn't make any sense. I just want to make sure that, you know, same here.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Is there any other new business? Can I have a resolution to go into closed session?
Public comment.
I'd like to open up this time for public comment.
Hey, how are you? I'm Matthew Hirsch, 333 Felton Avenue, and I just wanted to clarify, just, just one thing that was just talked, discussed. I'm a trustee on the Highland Park Ed Foundation, a relatively new one and I'm still learning. But yeah, May 30th is casino night and it actually starts at 6:30. So if you, you might have received a, an invitation and a remittance envelope in the mail, but it's, but if you want to donate online, you can www...
I haven't gotten the invitation yet.
Oh, you haven't gotten the invite?
No, I got the invite.
I didn't get one.
I did too.
Maybe you're not invited.
Maybe you're not invited.
I think everyone's invited, but everyone is invited, and if you didn't receive an invitation, you can go to www.hpfnj.org. And it started at 6:30. The film that Michelle mentioned, though, is also very important. That's for, I'm going to try to go to both, but that's it. Thank you.
Perfect. Please put $100 on red for me. Of the fake money, not the real one.
I haven't mastered this writing and speaking at the same time part, so you'll just have to give me a second because I do want to get everyone out of here.
No problem. Try writing, speaking, and tapping your head at the same time.
Yeah, that's not going to work either. So, obviously, many of us this morning, oh, sorry, Brian Ginsbrunner from 216 North Third. See, I'm not even thinking that, it's too late at night. So, many of us this morning actually got wind of the charter school issue and the lawsuit or the appeal that you're filing. So, I guess the clarity question really is, what are the costs that go into this appeal versus the costs that are going out towards what we'd be paying for the charter school going forward? You know, given all the other questions of transparency and so on, I think that it would just help us understand this a little bit better.
Yep.
That's one. And then, you know, I've been listening about the special ed thing for a while and I was just reflecting on me being a teacher many years ago with no experience in a private school, teaching a special ed class as one of my three classes. And all I can say is for those classes that don't have people who are dedicated special ed teachers as part of their core structure, I can't imagine how hard it must be. I had no experience doing it, I should not have been doing it, I can tell you that point blank. Different scenario, private school, this and that, but I think I echo comments from before that sort of, you know, special ed-specific teachers are very valuable to this endeavor. And I know that, obviously, that costs money, but it's just something that I wanted to just say because I've been thinking about it for the last couple hours. So, anyway, so the clarity question really is the key that I came up here for.
So, in terms of money going out, since Hattika's inception in 2010, we've sent over $700,000 to Hattika. So, it changes from year to year, but it's around $300,000 each year.
Right.
In terms of the cost to the district, that's yet to be determined. We are evaluating it day by day as the process goes, and we have our fees for our attorneys, but there's no hard and fast number that I can give you. But I can assure you that for a case like this, there is substantially less work than a normal, than a normal case, there's no discovery needed, and we have gotten that assurance from our attorneys and feel comfortable moving forward at this time.
So, I mean, I guess it sounds, just to clarify that point, the cost going out for a court case of this sort, or an appeal of this sort, not court case, but an appeal, is going to be less than just keeping the status quo slash letting them do this middle school.
Can I just clarify?
I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, let me answer and then, Darcy, you can go in. Yes, it is, we're not talking, I don't want to.
We're not talking six-figure substantial.
No, 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 no. I don't want to give you an exact number because I.
Nobody ever knows that until it's done.
But we're talking very, we're talking low numbers.
And just on the other piece with the budgets that we were talking about a couple weeks ago, obviously, I assume that from a legal standpoint, the conversations couldn't be had publicly until you met in the closed session earlier. How does that play into the budgets that we just, that you all just voted in going for this coming?
You're talking about funding, so there, the money to spend on this, we are hoping to use from reduced costs from some of our budgeted items from this year.
Ah, so it'll just sort of, from what we were talking about the previous time about some of the items were pulled out.
Yes.
So, it wouldn't necessarily be transferred back into the taxpayer piece that we've all been sort of going into? I take it, I'm just.
No, no, I'm confused by the question.
I'm sorry, I'm confused, I'm confused by the thing.
Yeah. So, there's what we like to call, well, you know, in any budget, there could be potential leftovers at the end of the year and/or unrealized costs that didn't materialize. So, from that money.
So, from that money comes these sort of situations?
Yes.
Right. And I'm sorry, I just wanted to clarify, Adam said that it's about $300,000 a year. I want to clarify, we started off with very low costs to Hattika and each year, those have incrementally increased. So, now we're up to $300,000 a year. Those are going to continue to increase. So, between 2010, their first year of operation, and now, we've seen about three-quarters of a million dollars. This year is another $300,000 on top of that. And then, each year now, they're going to expand to sixth grade next year, seventh grade the year after, eighth grade the year after, so we're going to see that continue to incrementally increase.
And the appeal specifically is to avoid the middle, is to try to prevent a middle school, not to go backwards on them. It's more of just going forward.
It's an all-encompassing appeal that will address how we pay tuition to charter schools.
In general?
In general.
Not really, really just a Hattika.
Well, just, yeah, sorry, just Hattika, but it will have, yes, just Hattika.
It's the total conversation about tuition.
Any charter school that we are not a district of residence for.
It's the interpretation, it's the interpretation of the Charter School Act is what we're.
Okay, and so it's not about specifically the, that they want to open a middle school, it's the entire gamut.
That part is, that's included in there, as I said, that the notification of those affected is part of our appeal.
Oh, okay. Fine.
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate those questions.
Hi, Havah Fryer, I'm Ash again. Thank you very much for updating us on Hattika and the superintendent issues.
You have to sign in again.
I have to sign in twice, okay?
No, no, sorry.
Okay.
Nope.
All right, so just one quick comment on each. One is in terms of the discussion of Hattika, I guess it's two, the letter that Hattika sent out this morning basically makes it seem like you guys have no chance and you're throwing money out the window. I don't know if that's true, they may just be doing that as a PR move. I certainly hope that's not the case because I don't want you to be wasting our money. But at the same time, when you are speaking about it, I hope you do it with a little bit more sensitivity because the students that we're paying to send to Hattika are Highland Park residents who have an equal right to a free public education, and this may be what their parents have chosen is the best choice for them, but the idea that we're taking money away from our kids, they're our kids too. They're going to a different school, but they're still our kids and they deserve an education as well. Then in terms of superintendent search, I really appreciate the update, but I'm very concerned about the type timeline. My daughter's preschool is affiliated with our Puy Elementary School and they just completed the search for their head of school and they did an excellent, excellent job, but they made a conscious choice to do it over the course of nine months and really get stakeholder involvement at every stage. When you're talking about doing a search over the course of two and a half months, I just don't see how it's even possible to get the right involvement from everyone. So, clearly, we know we really messed up last time we bought, you know, got a superintendent and we don't want a repeat of that. So, I know a couple other people have brought this up, the possibility of hiring an interim superintendent if it seems like things aren't going in a really great way. I mean, if you get someone really amazing and everyone's really confident, that's great, but, you know, don't speed and mess it up for all of us. The other thing is, in terms of broadly interpreting community, that every Highland Park resident should be given an opportunity to weigh in, whether or not they currently have kids in school, will in the future, have in the past, or just care. And then, finally, because of the type timeline, it is, you know, of course, very tempting to just use your beautiful new website as the exclusive means of communication, but that is disenfranchising for those students who have limited, and their families who have limited access at home. So, in terms of figuring out ways to engage those aspects of the community as much as humanly possible.
Yep. Let me just address the process. The Board has committed also to evaluating the process as we go and making a decision in terms of where we are in the process and the search and the school year and seeing what's best for the students and what's best for the community along the search timeline. So, nothing's off the table, is what I'm saying, and we'll continue to evaluate what's, where we are in the process.
All right, please continue to keep us posted.
Yep, thank you.
Can we go into a little bit more detail about the ways in which we'll try to outreach? Because I think we did a pretty good job of discussing, you know, a different process entirely from what happened last time.
I think we're actually going to be reaching out. I think it would be, I think it would probably be better coming from Israel as they, as he does the.
So, I think I know what you're asking, but I'm not 100% sure. I think you're saying, so we talked about having different community meetings and you're asking me, you're asking how we're going to advertise those?
No, no, I think that what you had said earlier was kind of just, you know, an overview of the ways in which we would outreach, but we had talked about different things like, you know, potentially providing childcare for people who would like to come to a meeting or.
Right, so I didn't want to say that, I didn't want to say that yet because we haven't finalized any of that?
No, what I'm saying is, is that Havah was asking if we would take into account different things that we did not before, and I was just asking if we could give some sort of good faith example.
So, in my mind, what happened before and what happened now are not correlated or connected in any way. I'm just talking about how we're moving forward for this year, and in due course, I think we would announce those types of considerations. I think this process is going to be different from last year in the sense that we are reaching out to the community. The mechanism for that is still, Israel needs to talk to the consultant who is having, they're having a conversation tomorrow to talk to the broader community. But feel, I mean, I don't know, feel free to elaborate in any way that you feel necessary.
Yeah, I just thought it was important that we let the community know that we hired a professional, you know, search firm for a reason, that, you know, two and a half months might not be long enough, but that we have a completely different process and some seasoned search professionals looking.
We did hire a professional search firm last time, just to let you know that.
Okay.
It's not.
No, it's not the same one.
Yes.
But that.
It's a professional, professional one.
I think I just wanted to let the community know that there is a lot more discussion and attempts at outreach than last time.
Yes, it will, yes.
There are going to be a lot more meetings.
We'll be open and transparent, as I've said the whole time since I've sat in the seat about the search.
Leave your social calendars empty.
Yes. Well, is there any other public comment? Yes.
Denise May Fryer, I understand I don't have to sign in again, and I'm actually amazed that you are allowing comments that are more than three minutes.
It's only when there's 40, there's 40 people here.
Anyway, it's kind of oddly refreshing, but anyway. So, first of all, no capone. Second of all, just my personal opinion, in terms of charter schools, the New Jersey Division, the Department of Education, whatever they're called, has thrust this upon us all. New Jersey is also, the state and the feds have cut our funding, which is why we're all getting screwed with our property taxes. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to say that. Why we're all not being, why we're all being overburdened with our property taxes, because the whole New Jersey system is dependent upon property taxes. I would suggest several things. One that, you know, this is a bigger discussion about how we fund our schools, but our town is really, we're a little tiny town that is supporting two different charter schools right now. We had, none of us had any vote in this, none of us. This is wrong, that's part of what their suit is about. I had my kids in a charter school. My kids were in the Greater Brunswick Charter School. They started out there because it was warm and fuzzy. And then, my son had special needs and didn't get services, and my daughter, who was reading above level in third grade, walked into the third grade classroom and was told that she had to look at the wall and say, there's an at and there's a the, a first grade reading level. So, we pulled both kids out and brought them here where their needs basically have been addressed. I have sat here since I've returned to the public schools here and watched has this has gotten cut and that has gotten cut. Programs after programs after programs have been cut, people have been riffed. Things are not being done the way they should be done because money is constraining everything, and one of the big constraints are the charter schools. I'm not saying that parents shouldn't be able to send their kids to whatever. I'm not dissing anybody here in Highland Park. If the state wants charter schools, the state should fund charter schools. It shouldn't come out of the public school district. $300,000, $700,000, whatever it is, that means that we can't revamp special ed, that means that we can't have a whatever. It means that they killed the violins for third graders. I mean, it's just ridiculous. It's absolutely ridiculous. If the state wants all these little stupid charter schools or good charter schools or whatever great charter schools, they can fund them. I'm tired of paying for it. If you want to send your kid to one of those schools, okay, great, but really, you're suffering, the public school itself is suffering when it happens. We have a very good public school system here. Sure, yes, you can say that parents can send their kids to another school, I know I did. I didn't know what it was doing. I did not know the effects it had, or I wouldn't have done it because I support our public schools. And Highland Park has a good public school system. It's one of the reasons why I'm willing to pay $14,000 in taxes so that my kids get a good education. It's one of the reasons why I live here. It's a good community, it's a safe community. I don't want to live in Edison, I don't want to live in Piscataway, I don't want to live anywhere else, I want to live here. So, I really am happy that you're fighting for the general charter schools, it's nothing against any particular charter school, I just think they should be funded by the state, not by us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will send all press inquiries to you, Denise. I said, we will send all press inquiries to you.
I do just want to say one thing and just to congratulate the Board. This process to make this decision was a collaborative one throughout this Board. Throughout creating a statement to be put out was collaborative. I thank Darcy also for adding a lot of great information today in going through the, in going through the statement that will be going out to this week. And I just want to thank everybody for agreeing to do this and bringing it to our attention, so I appreciate that. Is there any other public comment? Seeing no public comment. Is there a motion to go into closed session immediately following this, immediately following this meeting to discuss personnel?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.